Okay, at 6:30 I call the November 26th Planning Board meeting to order and the first thing as usual on the agenda is anybody who has any public comment that has nothing to do with anything that is on the agenda tonight but it may be something you'd like to see us take up at a future date. Does anybody wish to say anything? Okay, minutes of November 5th.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of November 5th, 2019 as corrected.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval not required plans received between November 6th, 2019 and through November 21st, 2019. First on the agenda applicant is Falmouth Housing Trust. Plan of land to remove note on plan in Plan Book 641, page 33. Located at Lot 2C, Lewis Neck Road. Engineers Warwood and Associates. So, I've done a lot of thinking about this, as you would know that at the November 5th meeting, which I was not present, it was agreed to table. And the applicant agreed to table this application at that meeting. So, the first thing we have to do before we can do anything about it is to have a motion to take this off the table.
Someone second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then during that meeting, the applicant agreed to come back with a new A&R plan with a note on it. Which would read, "Subject to determination of access by the Planning Board's vote of November 5th." This was done. A new rendition of the plan which was dated November 20th and delivered to the Planning Office November 21st happened. It is not a new A&R submission which would have gone to the town clerk. It's a new rendition of the plan. I was in the office when that was received. Then during that meeting of the, of November 5th, the board voted each determination of access for parcel C2, Lewis Neck Road with four conditions. In order for the applicant to receive an A&R endorsement from the Planning Board. I'd like to say if anybody on the board has any recollection different from what I've gathered here, please interrupt me. The first condition, that from Irene Road across the frontage of parcel C2 be cleared of brush to a width of 18 feet and a height of 13 feet. Which has not been met. Condition two, that the potholes be filled across the frontage of parcel C2. And that has not been met. Therefore, it appeared to me, and again if you have any corrections or other thoughts, please let me know. There are two possible options. The first one being that the board votes not to approve the A&R due to a lack of compliance with the board's conditions. The second option would be that the applicant withdraws without prejudice their application to be resubmitted at such time that the board's conditions have been fulfilled. In this case, it would be advisable that Falmouth Housing Trust meet with the neighbors to try to expedite the brush back. And that would be to 18 feet from Irene all along the roadway to 13 feet high. And this is fire department requirement. After that happens, the board would likely be happy to endorse the Falmouth Housing Trust's application for an A&R. Once a way suitable for fire department requirements is available. And I'd like to thank at this point also, all of the work that our staff, in particular Tom Bott, has put in for researching. The thought, just the time, it was an inordinate amount of time and work spent on this. As well as Frank Duffy for his legal advice. And of course Scotch Saluter and Mel Trot for their efforts as well, they were out there. And giving the advice and the knowledge on this. Now, are there any comments on the board at this point? Okay, you, there's nothing that I haven't covered and I haven't accurately portrayed, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Then how would the board like to proceed on this? As I said, we seem to have the two options. Pardon?
May I use a moment first?
I think you can, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Laura Moynihan, attorney for the housing trust. Madam Chair, you said in your statement, you read the conditions of the access determination. And you said, "In order to receive an A&R endorsement from the Planning Board, the following conditions had to be met." With respect, that's not accurate. That's not what the access determination says. The zoning bylaw says that the building commissioner determines if the conditions have been met before issuance of building permit. You have received a wealth of information just recently on this issue. We have told you that this plan was already endorsed as an A&R plan in 2011.
But as a non-buildable plan, Laura.
Correct, it was, the lot however was created, subject to a condition that there be an access determination. That was it. There wasn't anything that went further to say, "And then bring another A&R plan back to remove this note." We, the Falmouth Housing Trust has agreed to do this because Mr. Bott has requested it. And it was requested in order to have something to record at the Registry of Deeds. My position has always been that there's no legal requirement in this case. This is different from Mr. Fender.
And let's get that. We're not talking about Mr. Fender.
Well, some of the material that was emailed to you at just before 5 o'clock tonight talks about opinions from Mr. Duffy relating to.
I didn't look at that Laura, so I don't know what you're talking about, that's unfair.
But, but Mr. Fender's plan, keep in mind, the lots have not been created. Okay, it's a new plan, a new A&R endorsement on the road.
Laura, stop right now. This is out of order. We are not talking about Mr. Fender at this point. We are talking about the Falmouth Housing Trust's A&R. And now it is up to the board to determine, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, but then Mrs. Carefoot, we should be striking then from the record, any information that's been given to you about this application that relates to a different application. Even tonight, you were given emails that talk about this other application. So I'd like to also read to you an email that you did not.
Yeah, it really is beside the point and I haven't seen any of those emails.
I'd like to just read to you an email that you weren't given, okay, from Mr. Duffy. You were not given this email, which I think is important and Mr. Duffy is here and I'd also, he can certainly speak on this. This was at the end of the meeting on Tuesday, November 5th. It was a bit hectic, but it's my understanding of events, a motion was made to table the A&R plan. This is an unusual motion, but appropriate under the circumstances. The motion made to table was made with the consent of the applicant, which was given orally by Attorney Moynihan. Attorney Moynihan acknowledged that the Planning Board could not approve the plan on file, but she did not want a denial. As I understand her representations, the Falmouth Housing Trust will submit a new A&R plan in the next few days for consideration on November 26th. The words "not a buildable lot" will be deleted. In place thereof, the new plan will bear a note, "Subject to a determination of access approved by the Planning Board 11-5-19." The determination of access contains the provision for clearing the way to 18 feet and filling potholes in front of parcel C2. A building permit shall not be issued until the conditions of the determination of access are completed. This is an accommodation to acknowledge the Falmouth Housing Trust does not own the parcel and cannot perform the conditions until it takes ownership. The determinative access, determination of access procedure should be completely reviewed by the Planning Board. I was not aware it existed until a week ago. It is perilous and should be codified in regulations so that the Planning Board can apply it consistently. That is relevant to this application. We have, this proceeding has been going on since June. We had an initial access determination voted. The town planner requested that an A&R plan be submitted to remove the buildable lot note. After that occurred, there were meetings with the fire department. Then there was an opinion that that access determination should be revoked. That access determination revocation was put on the agenda without notice to the housing trust or the property owner. I still don't know how that's possible, but it did occur. Then we have a November 5th hearing where we're here for an hour and a half discussing how the housing trust does not own this land, cannot do this work. And that they want to proceed to buy this lot, do the work, and file for the building permit. It's very simple. Now in, mixing in with all that is the Planning Board and the planners desire to revise the access determination policy. I totally get that. And it should be revised. But not on the back of this applicant. It's not fair to this applicant to now say, "Go out and do all this work and then we'll remove this restrictive note off your plan." How are they going to do that? They're supposed to be buying this lot in December. That's going to thwart what they're trying to do. It's going to be an expense to the applicant to go out and do this work before they can even own the land. That's absurd. It's absurd. And it's not the same situation when you have an applicant coming to you under this apparent new policy that you adopted between June and now. Saying that applicants must do this work before they can proceed. So I'm asking you, I know what you want your policy to be and I understand that. And that may be correct. But it's not fair or appropriate to develop that policy at the expense of this applicant.
I will rebut your statement there. That has been the policy of the Planning Board for quite some time. Jim and I both remember a vote being taken. Notes, minutes, don't.
Not that conditions have to be fulfilled before the plan is endorsed. This is new, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Board, if anybody has heard that before, that the work has to be.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm interrupting you on that Laura.
Okay, well you said initially that our options are to do the work or withdraw the plan. That's a new policy. That to my knowledge has never been a requirement of this Planning Board. It's a new policy that you're developing at the expense of this applicant. I'm suggesting to you that since this procedure has been ongoing since June, it's not fair and it's not acting in good faith to now impose that policy on this applicant. I'd ask you to endorse the plan to remove the note as we've requested.
Do you hear what you're saying? Tom, do you have any response to that?
Only that A&Rs aren't conditional. This lot was created under an A&R that put a note on the plan that said this lot, C2, is not a buildable lot. And in order to remove a plan, a note from a plan, it requires the filing of an A&R. And under the A&R process under Massachusetts General Law 81P, it says, "The Planning Board may endorse an A&R plan on a private way if in the opinion of the Planning Board it meets suitable grade construction." I'm paraphrasing that in front of me. And because A&Rs aren't conditional, those are the conditions that have to be on the ground when the board endorses the plan. This is something that Frank and I have discussed and we have conferred and we have agreed that that's what the law says. A conditional A&R is called a subdivision. You create lots two different ways. You create lots through subdivisions where we build an entire neighborhood. Or you create lots through A&R process where a lot, where a parcel fronts on a way. Where that way is a private way, it is up to the board to determine if that access is adequate. And it's the conditions at the time of the endorsement. It's not conditional, a conditional A&R is a subdivision. And under the law, the board may endorse the plan or they may declare it a subdivision. There's no approval, there's no disapproval. If it meets the opinion of the board, the way is suitable, then that's when the board endorses. And it's not the conditions that may be met, it are the conditions that are in place at the time. And Frank and I have had plenty of discussions about that. This information is all over, all the memos that we've written about this and discussed about that. The board is the determiner of what gets endorsed and what doesn't get endorsed. And it's in your court and I don't think I'll, I think Frank would concur with that. If you want to give him the podium to have him discuss it.
That was my next call. Frank, would you wish to respond? Do you have anything to say and add?
Could I just add, Madam Chair, that I have yet to see any legal citation that says that this note can't be removed off of this plan. There is no legal requirement that I'm aware of, that an A&R plan is required to remove this note. That keeps getting mixed into, an A&R can't be endorsed when the conditions haven't been met. This is a distinct and different situation and I'm sure Attorney Duffy can opine on it as well. This has always been the practice of the town of Falmouth. But there is no legal requirement that says that you have to submit the A&R plan to remove this note. That's very important.
Frank, do you wish to respond at this point?
We're doing this at the, so there's a written record at the Registry of Deeds.
Okay, Frank Duffy, Town Counsel, quite a bit here. First of all, Ms. Moynihan did read an email and that she correctly read it, that's what I sent. I sent it on the 7th of November. And at that time, I was, I believe I represented what I understood the conclusion of that meeting to be. That they were in fact going to submit a new plan, which would not contain the words "not a buildable lot." And in its place, they would bear the note, "Subject to a determination of access approved by the Planning Board 11-5-19." Now, then I refer to the determination of access, but then the sentence I think is important. And this I think is really what this is all about. "A building permit shall not be issued until the conditions of the determination of access are completed." Now, at, we were here on the 5th of November and just so happened, the next day practically, I came across a case that had been decided by the Massachusetts Appeals Court on the 29th of October, which was basically a week before we were here the last time. That's a case of Barry versus the Planning Board of Belcher Town. And it does say, and it confirms the existing law, that when a planning board approves or endorses a plan, approval not required, it refers to existing conditions. What is there at the time you make the endorsement. But I also in my memorandum tried to make some comment about the unique situation that the Falmouth Housing Trust has, that they don't own the property and they arguably cannot do the work right now. But what they really want is to be able to record something in the registry. And I don't really know why they want to, because I don't think it's going to help them, but that doesn't have that note, because it contains another note that it's subject to the determination of access. So, in answer, then I think that the responsibility of the Planning Board probably all along should have been to look at the conditions on the ground today and see what's there. We have gone kind of off on a different approach because this board has really been trying to help the Falmouth Housing Trust. So if there's some way that somebody can feel that, okay, can we control the issuance of the building permit, you might think about that. I don't know if you can.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, of course Cheryl.
Wouldn't it be true that the building commissioner couldn't issue the permit until the conditions of the letter of determination are met?
Well, I would think that would be the case.
Right, so it's just handing on the problem.
But if that's, if that's what you intend, then you have to make that a vote and you have to communicate it to the building commissioner so he's aware of it. You can't assume that he's just going to look at this plan and come to that conclusion.
Thank you Frank.
You should restate your alternative.
What I want to ask first is, has everybody on the board actually been out to the property and driven the road?
Yeah, well, as far as I could go.
Yeah, as far as I could go, okay. And.
Yes.
Okay. And I have heard comments about that, that it's.
Nothing's changed.
Right. And that it is very difficult to drive it. At least, you know, with my car, that's probably six inches off the ground, I decided not to gut the bottom of it. I think you had the same experience. Okay.
I don't have four-wheel drive.
Right.
I drove it with a four-wheel drive.
Okay, so. Madam Chair. Truck a four-wheel drive can probably.
I want to point out, we heard testimony that Lewis Neck goes all the way into Great Harbors. And I have taken the time to drive and walk the road, look at the deeds and Lewis Neck does not. Lewis Neck Road curves in and goes back to Acapescot. It's shown on all the town plans there. So we were given testimony that wasn't exactly accurate. We probably should have pulled it up on the screen or looked at it or had a site visit, but it does not connect with Great Harbors. That was, and this is a life safety issue. There is a giant tree in the middle of this road that I don't see how we could, you know, if there's, if people could be isolated in a storm and a hurricane, trapped in here and couldn't get out. We don't have anything less than 500-foot rows for public safety issues. This is a very, very dangerous life safety issue, I know we're trying to help the housing.
Madam Chair, point of order. We're not re-debating, we shouldn't be re-debating an access determination. We're here simply.
We actually are here for an access determination.
No, you're not, Madam Chair.
We are and.
It was already voted and it's been filed with the town clerk. The request here is very simple. We were asked, Mr. Duffy said, "Why we want this plan?" We filed the plan because it was requested by the town planner. I suggested we file an 81X. I suggested we file an eighty-one X perimeter plan, which I still think that the Housing Trust can do, to remove this note. We're here simply to ask you to document through the plan that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds that this note is no longer on the plan. That's it. We're not re-negot- rediscussing access. The access determination has been met. The Building Commissioner is the one, when a building permit is applied for, under the wording of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, who determines if those conditions have been met before he issues the building permit. From a practical point of view, for any applicant, and in particular, a nonprofit housing organization here, to go up, to, to be required to go out and spend the money to do this work, means A, they will surpass their deadline under their purchase and sale agreement to, to purchase this lot. B, they'd be spending, uh, a significant expense before they actually own the property, and there's never any guarantee that that conveyance can take place. And C, they haven't got to the point of actually completing and funding a building permit application. So the practical sequence of events is to have everything in order to purchase the lot in terms of your access determination, then you do the work, then you apply for the building permit. All we're asking you to do here, we're not asking you to make an access determination here. That's been done. We're asking you simply to vote a plan that removes the former note on a previously endorsed A and R plan. Okay?
Laura, we did actually make it by vote on November fifth...
Right.
And the conditions of two of those were not fulfilled.
There's no...
So we can't do it, as far as I can see, but...
But where, where does it say?
Laura, I'm not going to argue further.
I'd like to hear from either Mr. Bott or Mr. Duffy, give us some legal reference where this plan is actually required.
Who's running this meeting? Who's running this meeting? The Planning Board has the authority, Jim. The Planning Board has the authority to be able to make the decision, and right now, I want to hear from the Planning Board. You heard an alternative that I suggested, which is you could withdraw it without prejudice, you work with the neighbors, you get that cleared. How is your problem to do it? And then come back, and we can make the determination.
How, how is somebody supposed to do that in, in two weeks, Mrs. Kerfoot? It's not possible.
I have, I know very well that purchase and sales agreements can be extended.
They're not going to extend this. We've been at this with this board and this staff since last June, trying to get this very simple thing.
Tom, would you like to make any comments, please?
I would, listen to Mr. Duffy. I'd like to understand how we can do this, to achieve what we'd like to achieve, and still have, uh, some control over the road being done. That's why I wa- I'd like to understand how we can do that, if it can be done.
It can be done.
It can be done.
Because we were also told initially that we couldn't put the conditions on it, that we did put on it initially.
Yes, it's getting...
Giving the, the authority for the A and R to some other entity.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the rock and the hard...
Of course, it is.
But according, uh, if I understood, Mr. Duffy, if we can approve this and have the, um, Building Commissioner understand these conditions, not to issue a building permit until they've been met, how can we do that? That's what I want to know.
Isn't that put in a condition still?
That's the way I see it, is putting a condition. I know.
I'm asking.
Frank, is there any way to do that that doesn't...
Because, uh, actually, if they get an A and R plan, they can't get a building permit until the Building Commissioner says they can, so...
There may be some room here, because, uh, listening to Attorney Moynihan, she said there's going to be three steps. The first is here, the second is the work's going to be done, and the third is the building permit. So basically, they've said the wo- the conditions will be met before the building permit is issued, and they've agreed to that. Is that true?
Yes, and that's what the zoning bylaw requires, so we, we absolutely, it doesn't matter whether they agree or not, they have to fulfill that.
Charlotte?
Mr. Duffy, where does that put us? In June, we approved this. We're in favor of affordable housing, we wanted to help them with it, and then we learned from your office that the way we had done it was incorrect, because we had conditioned it. So we had to, then in order to make it correct, we had to revoke that, more or less start over. Yes? And then we gave a letter of access of determination that gave conditions that we were led to believe at the, uh, at that time could be met by this group before they came back, and would be met by this group before they came back. Now I'm hearing, oh, we can do something conditional. No, we already tried that.
I'm not suggesting you cannot do anything conditional by yourself, but in June, there were two problems that, that I saw with your vote. First, you deferred to a later decision of the Fire Department as to whether access was adequate or not, and that's not permitted. That's not conditional, that's just, you're not doing your job when you do that. The second one, um, is that, I'm trying to think of the second one now.
But this is different in some way? The conditions to remove trees and fill puddles are different?
Because you put a condition on your, you put a condition on your decision that it was subject to the approval of some third party who wasn't even in the room at the time. When the Planning Board votes a decision on an approval not required, votes to endorse a plan, approval not required, or votes to approve a subdivision, it's got to be final. In other words, when somebody walks out the door here, they have to know what you've done. When you did that back in June, you put a condition on it that basically ceded your authority to somebody outside the room, and that's what I objected to.
Is this not the same?
In the second, the second, I just remembered the second one.
Because we're saying it's up to the Building Commissioner to do it.
The second one is that you, um, no, um, just slipped my mind, I'm sorry about that. Just happens. But I, it, what I'm trying to suggest is that they, basically, were here just a few minutes ago, offering to not apply for a building permit until such time as the work is done. And if something can be done with that, that may be a resolution of this conundrum.
How is that different?
Can't get a building permit.
It's not different. And it's, instead of being, uh, up to the Fire Department, it's up to the Building Commissioner.
But we can't make that, we cannot make that a condition.
Yep. He's suggesting that we can.
Oh, he's not suggesting that. He's suggesting that we can approve the A and R, and they've agreed not to apply for a building permit until they do, so it's the honor system.
But then we run into the situation...
No, I wouldn't suggest it be the honor system, it, it'd have to be documented in some agreement. It's, it's, if your vote is conditional with their approval, then it's not really conditional.
So, under section two forty dash one seventy-nine point one of the zoning bylaw, it says, and this is under the Building Commissioner's authority, "No permit shall be issued to build a new principal structure on any lot unless the lot has the minimum required frontage on either," and then it talks about a public way, a way, or C, "a way in existence prior to nineteen fifty-six, which has been improved to the satisfaction of the Planning Board in respect to having adequate width, grades of construction, et cetera, provide, to provide for the needs of vehicular access." So that is where, when the building permit application goes in, the Building Commissioner has to look at the access determination, have a discussion with the town planner, make a decision that the conditions of the access determination have been met before the building permit can issue. We've always taken the position, and it has been represented and was represented at the last meeting on this matter, that the, the Housing Trust cannot do this work before they own the land. So this is the built-in requirement of the zoning bylaw. In your vote of this plan, it can simply be added that the plan was endorsed on such and such a date, C-section two forty dash one seventy-nine point one of the zoning bylaw prior to issuance of building permit. That's not a condition, it's a statement of what the law is in this community. That's it. That covers you, it protects you, there's no honor system involved, that section has to be referenced, which links back to the access determination. That's all we're asking. It's in the bylaw.
If Mr. Duffy's good with that, I'm good with that.
Anne?
I, I was going to see if, you're good with that, Frank?
Couple of points. The, the purpose of the, of this exercise that we're going through here is not necessarily for the benefit of the Falmouth Housing Trust, it's for the benefit of the people who are going to live in this house, they're going to build. They're entitled to have adequate access. So if, if you can figure out some way to assure that they get adequate access, then I'm comfortable trying to help you come to, come together with something. And, uh, the, uh, a note that the, um, that the lot is subject to a determination of access, plus some kind of communication with the Building Commissioner to make sure they understand the gravement of your vote, may solve that. Just suggesting.
Couldn't... Anne, do you like the word "may"?
Never. Could we ask another question?
Of course.
We're being asked to endorse an A and R. We're not supposed to endorse A and Rs unless the conditions have been met, that, that it's already done.
You know, if that's, fine. That's one of your options, that's what...
So, if there's an alternative, an eighty-one something, why not do that rather than asking us?
Mrs. Kerfoot gave, Mrs. Kerfoot gave you that option. That's one of the two options she gave you at the beginning of this meeting. If they feel comfortable filing an eighty-one X plan, and, well, fine, go ahead, do it, they're free to do it.
Right.
They don't need your approval to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if they're satisfied that that will accommodate their mortgage lenders and everybody else, let them do it.
Right.
If you're comfortable that way.
But, but why, why would, why would you want to put the Falmouth Housing Trust in that un- uncertain type of position, when we were originally asked to file this plan to remove the note? At no time when we were asked to file this plan did anybody say, "Go out and do the work." It was, the statement was made, the next step is to file the plan to remove the note. That's all we're asking you to do, is document that note. You can say in your vote that the A and R plan is endorsed, C-section of the zoning bylaw, prior to issuance of a building permit, to determine that the access conditions have been met. That's it. That's all you have to do. That's a letter that gets filed with the town clerk and copied to the Building Commissioner. The Falmouth Housing Trust is not trying to get out of doing this work. They, they understand the work has to be done before they get a building permit, so I'm not sure why this is, has to be so difficult for them. There's a, a system built in place to protect everybody's interests here. Why do we have to make this so difficult for them? Why can't we just do it that way and let them buy this lot under this deadline that they have? Spend the money after they own it, do the work, and apply for their building permit? Are, are we afraid that they're going to somehow try and get out of doing the work? It's not going to happen. The Building Commissioner's not going to issue a building permit. Town Planner certainly is not going to let that happen. So why, what are we worried about?
Anne, do you have further comments or questions?
My comments go way back to how, and, and I, I don't want to relitigate it here, but how we ever came to have an A and R, approval not required, with not a buildable lot to begin with, is way beyond me. And that being, I want to make sure that just doesn't happen again, so that we're, are you looking to be, for me to say, Tom?
When, when the chairman recognizes me, I'll be happy to bring that. So, uh, there are lots of pieces of property on lots of old roads in lots of towns. Uh, and for the most part, uh, if someone wants to divide it, they have to prove that they has one of these three ways. Uh, and so in the case of nineteen, uh, of two thousand and eleven, when this plan was endorsed, there was, uh, one lot, which is now C one and C two, and they wished to divide it into two. Uh, and there's not much discussion in the minutes, but essentially, the plan came to the board with a note on it that said, uh, "This second, uh, parcel is not a buildable lot," uh, because of the access. So, most of the determination of accesses we've had, and I've gone through and looked at these things from nineteen eighty-six or so, most of the determination of access prior to have been on a road like, uh, Timothy Bourne Cartway or Lewis Neck, that essentially there was a parcel in existence, and the question was, "What does it take to get this, uh, access?" And so those are the determination notes. I've not seen one of these yet that related to a plan, uh, an A and R plan, that had a note on it that says, "Not a buildable lot." Uh, when the lot was created into two, uh, the intent, as I understand it, was not to intensify use on the road. So you've got, let's call, uh, seven lots on the road, you get to divide one, there's still seven buildable lots on the road, and this other one was left to this, uh, as not a buildable lot, until that access was improved. Uh, so, in order to remove a note, uh, from an A and R, you have to have an A and R to remove the note. And under the, the law, as I understand it, those are those conditions that are in place. So, we have this six, six, uh, circumstance with parcel C and parcel C two, because it was once just a lot, and someone wanted to divide it, and so it said, "Okay, you can divide it and build on this, but the other is not buildable until those conditions are met." And that's where we're at today, and that's where we were in June, when someone said, "I want a determination of access," and I followed up and said, "Yes, a determination of access, and you'll need to file a plan to remove the note." It's been my understanding, uh, and I think it's most people's understanding in my business, is that in order to endorse an A and R plan, it is the conditions that are on the ground at the time of the endorsement. So, uh, would, should that letter have gone on to explain, uh, how you go about determining that, you know, uh, what the standards are for an A and R? Well, it's fairly standard, it's in Massachusetts General Law, that the, the, the opinion of the Planning Board. So, this is eighty, uh, this, uh, lot, the Pilatus's lot, is an anomaly, because it's a determination of access on a lot, uh, with a note on it that says, "It's not buildable." So, there's two steps, determination of access, creating those conditions, to remove the note. That's how I understand the law. And over two hundred and forty-eight or so A and Rs I've overseen in my career in Massachusetts, that's pretty much how it's been. Uh, but, once again, it gets back to the opinion of the board. Uh, what is the opinion of the board?
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, when the plan was, when the first access determination was issued in June, at the time when the town planner requested a new plan be submitted, it was suggested that that could be approved within a week or so.
You've been over this before, Laura.
But let me just finish. There was no suggestion at that time that the work had to be done before the plan was going to be endorsed. This is a new policy that's been developed over the summer and into this proceeding. We all know that.
Oh, you just heard Tom say what he said, that the conditions on the ground have supremacy at the time of the application.
That was not the position, that was not the position in June, and it was not communicated to us in June. At that time, it was simply file a plan to remove the note. But let me say that this note, and to answer your question, this practice has been the practice of the town of Falmouth for many, many years when it comes to access determinations. We've seen them, we've discussed them at these hearings, that an applicant would come to the board, I've done it myself many times. We would ask for endorsement of the A and R plan, an access determination would issue subject to conditions, and the plan would be endorsed. We all know that that occurred on numerous occasions over the years. That's, that was the practice. You'd come in, you'd ask for your plan to be approved, you'd get your access determination, but before you got a building permit, you had to fulfill the conditions, which of course makes sense, because people coming in to buy land that they have under a purchase and sale agreement, it's absurd to say to them, "You need to go and pave this road," or "You need to widen this road," when they don't even know if they own the land or they're going to be able to get a building permit. So that's why the prac- the practice has always been, bring your plan, here are the conditions, this has to be met, but we're going to endorse the plan, but we've got these conditions on the written record, you need to meet them. When you go to apply for your building permit, the Building Commissioner confers with the town planner, they go out and inspect the property. If the conditions have been met, the building permit issues. That's how it's always been done. We all know that. So the Falmouth Housing Trust has now been caught up in these past few months in these new policies developing. And what I'm saying to you is, fine, if you want to go ahead and develop new access determination policies, then it should be a written policy that the public is aware of, and it's on your website, not this, as we go, meeting by meeting, memo by memo.
I've been on the board nineteen years, and maybe my memory is failing me, but I do not remember endorsing an A and R with conditions. That may be true, but I don't remember doing it.
I can give you, I have probably six samples... I can give you, I have probably six samples in my file, if you'd like me to dig them out. We've discussed them at the hearings. Mr. Drewley certainly is aware of them. That has been the practice. Mr. Bott acknowledged at the last meeting that he spoke with Mr. Curry, and Mr. Curry acknowledged that that has always been the practice. Mr. Duffy has said that practice should be revamped. Fine, revamp it. But what I'm saying is, it's not fair to do it on the back of this applicant.
Okay, we've heard your argument. Pam, do you have any further comments?
No, my only comment was, I, I don't disagree that that was a process. Are you saying that these A and R plans were not a buildable lot?
I don't remember that.
As it said on this plan, not a buildable lot. So are you saying there have been many other issue, uh, many other determinations with an A and R plan, which I don't even know how it becomes an A and R if it's not buildable?
It, I have, in my experience, seen, I can't name it or put my finger on it, but I, I think I can represent fairly that that has been a past practice. When there's a need for an access determination, there's a note put on the plan that says, you know, "This is not a buildable lot until the planning board makes an access determination." And it's there for a purpose, so that there's notice to the public, that somebody going in and buying this lot is gonna have adequate public notice that that lot is not eligible for a building permit until the planning board reviews the lot.
He put a note on the plan that says, "Without regard to buildability," when we voted. We do that consistently.
I guess that wasn't on this plan.
No. Well, it's on another.
So thi, so this plan had that note on it for notice to the public, that this isn't a buildable lot. You have to come back and you gotta go to the planning board, and you have to have the planning board make a determination on access, which we've done. Now we'd like the note to be removed so that there's a clear record to the public that it is a buildable lot. That's all we're asking you to do.
Okay. Pam, do you have any further questions or comments? Bob?
First of all, I don't know why anybody would wanna buy a lot that isn't a buildable lot.
Right.
Uh, but I, I do seem to recall, and I don't know whether it was an A and R or not, but, uh, it was off of Terre Haune, 'cause I remember getting ripped to shreds by briars and everything, walking up to a piece of property that was, uh, where we were determining where the access to that property was gonna go. And it was, uh, all boulders and, uh, a cut. Do you remember that?
I do.
Was, was that an A and R?
As far as I know, it was not an A and R. It was one lot. He wanted to subdivide it, and we said, "You can't do it."
Okay, so that, that was, uh, that time?
Yeah. So we wanted to get two on there.
Yeah. So, I, I'd just like somebody to come up with a motion that we can vote on.
Well, I wanna hear the comments.
Uh, my comment, um, it sounds to me as if, unless I've really misunderstood this process, that there are two steps to it, uh, in this particular instance, that there's a letter of determination, which is really sort of an informal process. And it gives conditions, and if the conditions are met, then you can have the second step, which is an endorsement of an A and R, because by then the conditions have been met. And that's our sticking point here. And that that's not a new thing. The, uh, the requirements for an A and R are apparently part of state law. Is that right, Mr. Bott?
Um, forty-one, eighty-one P.
Right. So, whether it's a practice in Falmouth or not, it's state law, and we here believe that it has been the practice of the board to go by that. We don't see that there have been a lot of times that that hasn't happened. We gave the letter of determination saying this has access if these things are, are done. Two of them have not been done, and now we're being asked to endorse an A and R, and they're, they're not done. So, we could bend over way backwards, or this alternative process that Attorney Moynihan has described could go forth, or we could accept, uh, perhaps, you know, option B, which is, the applicant withdraws without prejudice their application to be resubmitted at such time that the board's conditions have been fulfilled. In this case, it would be advisable that the Falmouth Housing Trust meet with the neighbors to try to expedite the brushback, which after all is in their interest also. So, I would be in favor of making a motion about the withdrawal without prejudice.
Paul?
I've followed it very closely. I'm not prepared to talk about the legal aspects of it. I'm not an attorney, so I can't adjust the legal aspects of it. There is a procedure we followed. Unfortunately, it went off track for a number of reasons, with some incomplete information, and there's been some bypassing of the procedures. Uh, I'm uncomfortable with that. But I think the option of, we're being forced to make a decision because there's some purchase and sale in a couple of weeks, that can always be changed. I don't know how many people are trying to buy this property that has non-buildable lot on it. I wouldn't think to be that many. So, I think the option of withdrawing without prejudice makes a lot of sense at this point in time.
We can't force them to do that, though.
No.
You understand. Okay. Jim, I know you recused yourself from the vote, but I noticed that you were commenting.
I didn't recuse myself.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I abstained.
Abstain, sorry.
Because I didn't agree with what you're doing, but I didn't wanna vote against you, especially against the Falmouth Housing, 'cause I didn't wanna go on record voting against housing. There's a way that this can be solved. The street needs to be made safe for the public, and that's our job. And if we can make the street safe, I'm in favor of going forward with this. And, but, I, right now, I drove the street again today. I, I don't, I think it's a very dangerous public safety issue. Because, there's one other point I gotta bring up. There's a one point six acre parcel down. They could be jumping in and doing a forty B and coming in and say, "Now that we got a termination, we could keep coming at us and coming at us. We've gotta be careful." We can't make these decisions in a vacuum, just one off to help the housing people, because it, there's ramifications, and we're seeing it already. There's another one coming, and there could be more coming. I just, I didn't recuse myself. I just said, "I'm not gonna vote on it."
I wasn't here when that was-
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment on it. I think this is a public safety, life safety issue. I, I drove the street today. There, there seems to be giant trees in the middle of the road. I just don't see, there, there's a way to do this. Make the street safe, let them buy the lot and build it. But it has, the street has to be safe first.
Okay, so for us to make a determination, there would have to be a motion. And you understand that my second suggestion, we can't force on them. The only one that we can do is to vote A and R down, or up, as Frank suggests, and throwing it to the building commissioner.
Can I ask a question first, please?
Yes, John.
So, if we go back to the summer, my recollection is that, uh, I in particular supported this A and R because there's, uh, many other people live on this street that got building permits and built homes, and that made some sense. And Ms. Moynihan has made a suggestion this evening, that the A and R get endorsed with a note on the plan that it has to meet our bylaw, whatever it was, C one seventy-nine or something. And I would like to ask the town planner if, if he would feel comfortable with that, note being on an endorsed A and R plan.
Okay, may I respond to you before we go to Tom on this? Because in the research that I mentioned that Tom had done, and this had not come out, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a house, I think it was two houses down from this lot, that got approval to be built, so long as, after it was built, they would widen the road eighteen feet from their house up to Irene. Guess what? They built the house, but that was never done, and this is my concern.
But this note says, if, if I understand it correctly, no building permit will be issued unless this work is-
It's a matter of enforcement.
Yes. Well, the building commissioner's the person that issues the building permits.
And there was another lot that I won't mention names, but it was built upon, and it was unbuildable. Um, Tom, do you wish to make any comment on this?
Uh, I will, I, I will write exactly what the board would like me to write. If the board opts to say in their opinion that this road is suitable for A and R endorsement, and the motion of the board is, the board votes to endorse the A and R plan, uh, sub, uh, not, you, that, that you can say "subject," but essentially in the cover letter to the town clerk. Now, the cover letter doesn't go to the registry of deeds. Uh, the cover letter goes to the town clerk. So whatever goes to the registry of deeds is essentially going to have the board's endorsement on it, and it's gonna have a note that says, "Subject to a determination of access," 'cause that's what the plan says right now.
Is it a cover letter, or is it a note that's on the plan?
There's a note on the plan that says, uh, currently, that says, uh, this plan's-
What, what Ms. Moynihan has suggested.
Correct. Subject to the determination of the board.
I thought it was gonna be a note on the plan.
It's on the plan.
That gets recorded.
Correct.
Am I saying that correctly?
Well, the, the note, I was suggesting that the note be in the A, the, uh, decision itself, which we would be recording with the registry of deeds. And, and the note on the plan is, simply see the access determination of the Falmouth Planning Board. That's the way the plan is drafted right now. But you can certainly make it a condition of the endorsement that-
We can't use the word "condition."
Well, uh, you can make a statement in the letter, that, that it would be recorded.
We could also put it on the plan, couldn't we?
We could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we can put it on the plan-
Prior to signature, it could be added to the plan.
If we can put it on the plan, that would be my motion to endorse.
Frank?
One of the things we could, uh, certainly consider doing is having the note on the plan say, "Subject to determination of access voted by the planning board November fifth, nine, two thousand nineteen," and covenant of the parties filed here with, and have them, have a covenant drafted, which we can do very quickly, signed by all the parties, in which we expressly say, "No building permit shall be issued for this parcel until that determination of access is completed," in the building permit. Uh, in other words, it's not a condition if they have agreed to it.
That's my motion.
That's a covenant.
Covenant, have a covenant.
A covenant on it.
Oh.
Okay, John, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Should we see the covenant first?
I don't know whether we should see the covenant first or not. I would feel more-
It's gonna say just what I said, basically.
So that would, both of those would be on the plan?
Would be referred to on the plan. The covenant would be filed with the town clerk, could even be recorded in the registry of deeds.
As well.
But the, the purpose here is to get adequate access for this lot. Um, and that's, I think-
For the future homeowner.
For a future homeowner. Not necessarily for these folks, but for the future homeowner. That, that's the people you're really trying to protect.
Right.
Could I ask one more question?
Of course.
Frank, did I understand you correctly to say that A and R decisions have no precedental value?
That's the holding of the courts, yes. Because when you have an approval, uh, well, first of all, the, the planning board only endorses a plan. It doesn't approve the plan. It adorses the plan that approval is not required. So basically, you're saying you have nothing to do with it. So, therefore, it has no precedental va, no precedential value.
Thank you.
So how does the board feel about Frank's wording, "on the plan," as far as its protective value?
With a covenant.
The, right.
Separate covenant.
That it's not a buildable lot until certain conditions have been met, and that there is a covenant-
Correct.
-on the property.
And both statements are part of the plan?
Uh, both of them show right on the front of the plan, and there's a statement that goes with it, that is filed with the courts, with the registry.
That's my motion.
Can we repeat the motion?
Frank, you're gonna have to repeat it.
Play the tape back. The, the, the plan contain a note that it is subject to a determination of access appro, voted by the planning board on November fifth, two thousand nineteen, and a covenant signed by the parties, that a building permit for the lot will not be issued until the conditions of the covenant have been completed. Which will be, excuse me, until the conditions of the determination of access have been completed.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought that was circular covenant, yeah.
Yes, yes, it was. I recognize that.
And just so it's not a condition, the applicant is agreeable to that? Consent to the applicant. Is agreeable to the covenant being stated on the plan, and the note on the plan, and that- And submission of the covenant. Okay.
That's the motion. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there further comment on this? Paul?
I assume Mr. Duffy would draft this covenants. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Charlotte, you had something?
I'll vote for it, but I'm not comfortable with it. And a lot of it has to do with the process and the way people have been talking to one another during this process, and the time that lapsed, when we knew something was really wrong with that road, and what could be, what needs to be fixed is taking down six to eight trees. We've taken down a lot of trees around my house. That's probably about forty-five hundred dollars' worth of work. If this was that important, that investment could have been made in the safety of the people who are now going to be living at some point on that road. I wish that that had happened.
I do as well. When you go out there and you try to drive that road, and it was, said that, oh, it was a perfectly fine road.
And one of those trees is shattered already and ready to fall down.
I have a photograph of it right here.
I think there have been a lot of misstatements made as to the condition of the road and the fire department's approval of a twelve-foot wide road, that they wouldn't have any problem with it.
We're, we're ready to cure all of that.
Well, maybe.
Well, then they won't get a building permit.
Okay.
We'll have to follow up on that.
Yeah, we will. So it's been made and seconded, and there's been much discussion. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, reluctantly.
I'm gonna abstain again. I'm not, can't vote for it. Don't wanna vote against it.
How many are there? Vote for it?
So, no. Six.
Six.
And one abstain.
Same as June.
I need five to vote for it.
No, Bob was missing.
It's a majority.
Just a simple majority.
You weren't here in June, I think.
I'd just like to clarify that the plan can be submitted then for endorse, signature by the town planner on behalf of the planning board with that note on it. We do not have to come back, that the plan is just being submitted for signature by the town planner. As long as it contains that note, it will be signed.
Notes have to be on it.
Yes.
In regard to the covenant and-
Right. The note as per the motion. But I wanna just clarify that we will change the note, and we will submit it to the town planner for signature in accordance with your vote.
Seems like what, it's what we voted for.
That's exactly right.
When I get the plan with that on it, and the covenant from Frank, that's agreed to by both parties, then, uh, we'll endorse the plan. I would venture to say this will probably happen early next week, since it's sort of a short week this week.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know why that couldn't have been a condition of the sale, that the owner make, provide the access.
I'm feeling still very uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not. I'll be with this.
We oughta check to make sure this murder happens again.
Yeah, yeah.
The A and R is not a buildable lot. It's ridiculous. I'm saying, this is, this is why.
Okay, next on the agenda, the applicant Bernice and Jack Mandelbaum, Abby and Sue Downing, Lot and Barbara Groom, plan of land to divide Lot Four and merge portions with adjacent lots located at number sixty and number sixty-eight, Ostrom Road. Tom's in McGrath is the engineer of record.
Good evening. My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered, uh, land surveyor and a short-winded engineer. Um, what I like to do is describe to you this approval not required plan. What's going on is this house right here belongs to, uh, Abby and Sue Downing, and this belongs to Mr. Mandelbaum. There is an existing lot that is vacant, that runs down like this, includes this marsh. And what they're doing is they're buying this vacant lot, and they're dividing it and adding the portions of the lot to the Downing's lot. They're adding this sliver that, I did send over colored graphic, but it does, it doesn't seem to be here. So, um, that's gonna be added to the Downing lot. The Downings are gonna convey a portion of their lot to, uh, the Mandelbaums, and then the Mandelbaums get the, the remainder of the formerly vacant lot. So, the bottom line is, the result is, we do away with a building lot. Lot six A has got eighty-three thousand square feet of upland down toward calculation line. He's got some additional land of, uh, of a salt marsh, and then the Downing's lot is fifty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet. It conforms to zoning. It conforms to the minimum requirements of the Falmouth Zoner bylaw. So I assert that it's entitled to an endorsement of approval not required.
John?
Uh, one question, please. I couldn't, I couldn't determine what happens to Lot Four A on your plan. I was looking at the plan.
There's a, there's a symbol here, Z. So Lot Four A, um, it is, uh, the wetland, and the bottom line is Lot Four A is going to be conveyed to, uh, the owner of six A.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Four A is being conveyed to the owner of six A.
Where is six A?
Six A is the lot.
That now becomes all of this.
The lot that comes around like this. And Lot Four A is all salt marsh and freshwater water.
And you're not establishing any line between Lot Four A and Lot six A, even though they have one owner, there'll be no separating line between Four A and six A?
There is, on the, on the original plan that's recorded at the registry of deeds, there's a thing called a calculation line that falls about at the edge of wetlands. So the bottom line is that that, this line right here is the edge of wetlands. This is all wetlands, and from here above is all upland. There's a, EC is somewhere in a relationship, somewhere in this area. They've changed the zero on the mapping, so it's somewhere in here. There's a flood plain that's, these houses are both above the flood plain.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, then I would need a motion to endorse this plan as an A and R without regard to buildability.
So moved.
If I may just intervene here for a second, I tried to make the second one easier, there actually are motions in your book.
Where? Where's my book? Oh, there it is, okay.
Right before the green insert.
They move to endorse, it is there.
I thought I would try to make something easier.
Okay, with, without regard to zoning or buildability, and should not be construed as an approval that the lot shown are entitled to a building permit.
I think that's what Mr. Drewley said.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, word for word.
Right.
Exactly, I remember.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have another A and R, the applicant is David Ficillo, plan of land to adjust common boundary line located at sixty-four Karen Jane Avenue and Lot Nine, Renee Lane. Again, it's Holmes and McGrath.
Same place.
Oh, all right, so, hold on. So what you're saying is slide it down the old McGrath. Ah, all right. My name's Mike McGrath, and as I said before, I'm a registered professional land surveyor, and there was a, this plan will resolve a longstanding rebute, I'm sorry, dispute. There is now good relations between both owners. What happened is this building was constructed, and due to a blunder, it was too close to the lot line of the former Lot Nine. So there's gonna be a swap of two equal areas, and there's a judgment in, or a settlement in court, and unfortunately, you can't see it either. How do I get rid of this? You can tell I'm computer illiterate. The bottom line is, there's twenty-four square feet that is going to be carved out of Lot Nine, and I'm not gonna bring the mouse down because it keeps covering it.
We can see it on this.
But it's an Indian swap, you're taking twenty-four from one spot and swapping it with another.
Yes. I don't think you get to say that anymore.
I'm not supposed to say that anymore, that's what they, when I first joined the board, we used to call it that, sorry.
Well, in any case, that's, it's very hard for you to see the three inches by a hundred fifty feet, but that's why I drew this graphic, so you can see it. So since these are clearly labeled not a buildable lot, A and B, and as a description says, they shall be added to the respective lots, I think it's entitled to approval not required.
Anybody have any questions?
I thought I had seen it all.
Okay, again, I need a motion then.
Okay, I move to endorse the A and R plan for David Ficillo, plan of land to adjust common boundary line located at sixty-four Karen Jane Nav and Lot Nine, Renee Lane, without regard to zoning or buildability, and should not be construed as an approval that the lots shown are entitled to a building permit.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. They just keep getting stranger and stranger.
Okay. Next is public discussion, the applicant is Cumberland Farms, Inc., site plan review, application to raise and rebuild the existing convenience store in Corren's Retail, motor vehicle service, Corren's gas station and canopy, located at four hundred East Falmouth Highway and eight Old Meeting House Road. Farland Corporation is the engineer.
If I may.
I'm recusing my softness hearing.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair. We had talked about the thumbnail, I'm prepared with my first thumbnail.
Thank you.
So the revised plans submitted by Cumberland Farms, and this memo is in your, in your book, the revised plans submitted by Cumberland Farms include the removal of one of the gas filling stations that allowed them to get to the twelve percent coverage for structures without reducing the size of the building. Initially, they had showed twenty-seven parking spaces, which has been, which has now been reduced to twenty-four spaces by eliminating three parking spaces in the southwest corner of the property along East Falmouth Highway. The minimum number of parking spaces is twenty-two, and they're providing twenty-four. In practice, it's likely that customers fueling their vehicles might just walk into the store without using one of the twenty-four spaces, so I'm not particularly concerned about the number of spaces, 'cause it's more than is required by zoning. They've also provided turning motions for fuel trucks, one exiting to the eastbound and one to the westbound, as well as a motor home and the anticipated pickup with the towing boat. They provided color renderings of the building in the site plan, and speaking with Attorney Troyer earlier in the day, we talked about the special permit that the planning board is required or would have to issue in order to allow parking within the front yard setback for two forty-one ninety E. Pending the outcome of the site plan review, they're prepared to submit a special permit request to allow parking in the front yard. Under the assumption, and this is the trouble I get into as a bureaucrat, making logical assumptions, that if you folks approved the site plan, you would likely be inclined to perhaps approve the special permit, not that I wanna prejudice you about talking about that before it's applied. So essentially, they reduced the building, they reduced the number of parking spaces, they pulled them away from the street, and Attorney Troyer is here to explain how all that happened.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members, my name is Doug Troyer, I represent Cumberland Farms. With me tonight is our traffic expert, Maureen Chilbeck from McMahon Associates, and our project engineer, John McFarland from Farland Engineering. So we were before you on October twenty-eighth, or October twenty-fifth, and there were certain issues which this board identified to us that we went back and took a look at. In essence, as you can see from the existing site plan, there is, there is in essence five current driveways. This is two lots, we will be looking to consolidate these lots. One currently has a oil business on it, the other one has an existing Cumberland Farms gas station. In essence, right now, there are five access drives, there is some parking in the front, there is four fuel dispensers, and a basically a gas station. What we are looking to do now, after we listened to the board at the last meeting, is in essence, reduce the number of, we're maintaining the access points, but reducing it from five to three, one off of East Falmouth, and then two off of Old Meeting House. We have also, since the last time we were before you, we reduced the number of fuel dispensers from four to three, there'll be six fueling positions. In essence, that, that reduced the size of the canopy, and also allowed us to get much, much closer to the max lot coverage, which currently is pre-existing non-conforming at sixteen point percent. We are reducing it down to, actually, it's currently at sixteen point seven percent, we are reducing it down to thirteen point seven percent to try and get as close to the twelve percent requirement as possible. Again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming conformity that is on the lot, and we are doing everything and have done everything that we possibly can to get it as small, get as close to twelve percent as we possibly can, and we're hopeful that that meets the planning board's concerns, of which the planning board had at the first hearing. We also took into consideration adding some additional green space to the site by removing what we originally had, three parking spaces in the front to the left in this area here. We removed those three parking spaces, we're still in compliance with the required number of parking spaces, but decided to provide a little bit more additional green space. Cumberland Farms also shifted the islands at Canopies to the left a little bit to assist, and Maureen will talk about the site circulation on the property, kinda opens up and makes it even a better circular site by moving the, moving the canopy and the dispensers a little bit to the west. Grading was slightly adjusted on the site pursuant to some DPW comments. We added a beehive-style grate drain as requested by DPW, those are those blue checkerboard areas. And landscaping has been really looked upon and added for this site. Basically, right now, we have it in butter to the left, what we were proposing is a substantial amount of trees, as well as a six-foot vinyl fence that runs the entirety of where you see the tree line going around the property. We have also basically have used the topography, the landscaping, and the building placement has been maximized to extent feasible to maintain and enhance the character of the neighborhood, furthermore, nor to maintain and landscape improvements. It's the intention of Cumberland Farms, as it is with all of their projects, to have regular maintenance and upkeep of these areas. There's been a lot of sites where you have a lot of applicants that put in these, these trees, and they die. Cumberland Farms is well-known for taking care of their sites, and I, I think if you go around and look at the newer sites that Cumberland Farms has in the surrounding areas, that they really do have a very attractive aesthetically pleasing site, and it's very important to Cumberland Farms to maintain their landscaping. Cumberland Farms also has colonial-style maestroing will be consistent with the character and scale of the buildings and neighborhood of the town. The proposed design will distinguish the store facade, providing visual interest, which far exceeds that of the existing building on the site, which I'll show you in a little bit. The customer service area, loading area, and dumpsters will be screened, all electrical power, telephone cable, and other utilities will be installed underground. Cumberland Farms is proposing to do a vinyl siding, they'll have a stone veneer that runs around the entirety of the store. They also have put protective bollards all around the store where the parking spaces are to provide added safety for the patrons in these stores. There is also synthetic wood trim along the sides, as well as synthetic holes in the front, which I can't think of the exact name of what it is, it columns in the front. There's dormers, behind those dormers is really nothing, more for aesthetically pleasing looks. There's only one store, I think, that has anything behind it, and that's the one, it's a Marion. But we believe that this is a very attractive-looking site, much, much better than what is visibly there today. This is the other elevation plans. We put the, putting the HVA systems to the rear to basically avoid and maximize not having sound eliminate into the residential butter neighborhoods. The other thing that I did wanna show you is so, this is what's currently there today. Behind, you can see the Wayne Oil Business to the rear, as well as this really dated convenience store slash gas station, has been there for some time. Cumberland Farms, this is a rendering of what we are proposing that it will look like today. This rendering, just for transparency, was taken when we had four, four fuel dispensers, and I just didn't have enough time to have a rendering redone with the three, but in essence, you can see the three fuel dispensers, but in essence, these will be moved over a bit, and the canopy is much, much smaller today on the revised plans. And again, you could see the store from the side from Old Meeting Place. Actually have a photograph of a store that is very similar to what we did, or proposing to do here. This is an actual photo of our store in a store that we have in, I think it's, I wanna say Hanover, New Hampshire, I know it's a store in New Hampshire that was recently opened. This is a very similar style store. This obviously has many, many, many more pumps than what we are proposing here today, but I did wanna show you an actual photograph to show you that it does actually meet up with our renderings of what the store will look like, and this is very similar to that. I, at this, John, I kinda took your thunder, but I would like to have Maureen come up and kinda go over the traffic and the circulation plans, 'cause there was some questions and concerns about the ability to have a fuel delivery truck traverse the site, and there was questions, and there was curiosity to see the ability to have cars with trailers that would be towing boats. And we also took a very, another large vehicle, I think is a motor home, to basically show how it wouldn't be able to move through the, through the pumps as well as onto the site. And lastly, for a turn over, Maureen, I did speak with Mel Trot from the fire department, and it's my understanding he's reviewed the plans, and according to the fire department, it meets their, their requirements for the fire apparatuses to come on, and I believe there was a comment, a letter that was submitted, I haven't seen it, but he did indicate that he was gonna be submitting that to the board.
We can confirm that.
At this point, I'd like to turn over to Maureen to have her just kinda go over the traffic.
Thank you, my name's Maureen Chilbeck, I'm a regional manager at McMahon Associates. So I'm here to talk about the traffic study and the truck maneuvers. I know the traffic report was presented to you at a prior hearing, so I'm happy to address certain parts of that or elaborate, but if it's okay with the board, I'll concentrate more on the truck maneuvers tonight.
Yeah, I pushed it way up, sorry.
Okay. So typically, when we do a site like this, a convenience market and gas station, the one thing we come to the boards with is a truck turning template that shows how we get a fuel tanker truck in there, and usually on the premise that if we can get the fuel tanker truck in, we're all set, everyone can get in and out of there. So we'll start with that one, and then, you know, to the points that you raised at the last hearing, we do recognize your points in that Falmouth has some seasonal traffic that brings a variety of vehicles, so since the last meeting, we have looked at those. So if, if we look here, we're looking at the tanker truck that comes into Cumberland Farms. What we're showing, we ran this template in a couple different directions, the one that we're showing right here is having the tanker truck enter coming up Old Meeting House Road, turning left into the site. They pass along the front of the building and come around where they can position right over the tank, and they're positioned in the correct direction, because we like to have the driver on the inside loading the gas down to the tank, protected from uncommon traffic, and then they're able to maneuver out of the site pretty safely. If we, can we move down to, oh, you just scrolled, oh, that was easy. Thank you. Okay. So the next one I'd like to walk you through is if you had a motor home come through the site, and the points that I believe you raised at the last hearing were not just how do they get in and out of the site, but how do they get to various pumps? And again, this is an example, we ran a whole bunch of varieties, but as you can see here, we have the motor home coming up Old Meeting House Road, turning left into the site, they can easily get to the pump and get back out either by a left or a right-hand turn. And again, this is one example of them getting in and out. And then lastly, what I'd like to walk you through is if we had a pickup truck that was trailing a boat, and what you can see, we did a different path for this example. We've got them coming eastbound on Route twenty-eight, taking a left into the site. You can see from these turning paths that they could get into either of the center aisles to fuel their tanks, and then head back to, um, fuel their tanks and then head back out on Old Meeting House Road by means of a right or a left. Um, so, I think what these plans demonstrate, uh, first of all, we can get the fuel tanker truck in and positioned over the tank, and then secondly, we can get these specialty vehicles that you encounter here in Falmouth, particularly in the summer, into our site and into, uh, more than one of the pump locations safely. They can maneuver, there's adequate space in between the pumps, and they can get back out safely.
Wasn't the building actually pushed back a little bit to, to accommodate this?
John Marchand for Farland Corp. These revised plans, the, the location of the building hasn't, hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed, uh, 'cause, uh, when I was looking at this, uh, the other day, I was really impressed with the fact that you took those comments, uh, to heart and actually produced something that, uh, has a visual for us to look at and, uh, makes it a little bit easier to make a determination. Thank you.
Yep. The, uh, the islands were shifted, uh, to the left.
Okay, was the islands, okay.
Um, we did talk about traffic. Uh, the traffic impact study was discussed last time. I didn't know if there's any questions, uh, but, uh, we can, uh, leave that to the board. If you do have questions, Maureen is here to answer those. Uh, John is here to answer any questions you may have as well. Uh, I just wanna go back to one other thing. Uh, this is site plan, the revised site plan. Um, one of the issues that was identified by your peer engineer was the fact that, uh, we do have, um, two driveways, uh, that are thirty feet, uh, where the requirement's twenty-four, but this board does have the ability, uh, to grant the additional width of those roads due to the fact of our tanker trucks coming in. Uh, we need to have the width in order to, uh, allow for the, for that movement, in which, uh, Maureen just talked about that. So, I just wanna identify that, that that is one area that this board would need to, uh, uh, consider, um, being okay with. Uh, the other area is the, is the driveways. Is also, that was identified by the peer review, is that we have, we're proposing three where one per lot is normally what is looked upon. Uh, we are arguing that, uh, it's pre-existing, having five. We're looking to reduce it down to three, and we need the three, uh, in order to, uh, if you look at the top, top one off Old Meeting Street, that goes into our loading zone. Uh, we're trying to basically take away loading away from the actual physical site. That driveway allows a vehicle to go straight into the loading zone and, and avoid any conflict. Uh, the other two driveways at thirty feet, um, on Old Meeting and also the thirty-foot off East Falmouth, uh, you saw our, uh, circulation plans and the need for the width, and also, uh, the need, uh, to have both of them to have, uh, effective, uh, safety in turning, and we believe that that would meet the requirements for this board to, um, be okay with having three, uh, which is reducing it from five and also, uh, allowing the additional width for those two primary, uh, access drives. Uh, with that, if the board has any questions, I'd be welcome to entertain them.
Anyone on the board have questions? Jim?
Well, I'm pleased that, uh, they're trying to conform to the lot coverage. I mean, this is a once-in-a-life, not quite a lifetime, but, and, um, I think they've done a really good job. They're one percentage point away, and they've...
Yeah.
The driveways, they're getting rid of two. I think they've really worked hard, and I appreciate their efforts.
Paul, any?
I could, uh, thank you for taking our thoughts into consideration. It's a better, better project, I believe.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Tyler?
Yeah, I appreciate it, too. It's really gonna improve that corner.
Bob?
Uh, yeah, I made my comments. I, I, I think they've done a good job with what they've presented.
Cam?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us. We appreciate that.
Well, that's what the hearings are for, is to basically try and find the best plan that works for everybody, so for the town, for us.
Some people respond and some don't.
Thank you very much.
Um, is there anyone in the public who has anything to say on this plan? Okay. I didn't think there was anybody there. They didn't seem to be getting exercise.
But someone, it looks like you're shaking your head yes.
Oh, did you wanna say something? Somebody's shaking your head yes back there. Nope? Okay. So, Tom, we will see this for discussion and vote of the planning board.
So, that potential motion would be to direct the staff to prepare a positive motion for the board's consideration at their December tenth meeting?
Mm-hmm.
We will do that.
Okay.
Uh, we will incorporate, uh, well, you, obviously you'll see it, but we will incorporate the recommendations, recommendation language and conditions from DPW as well, and we'll plug all those in as well.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, it'll be December tenth.
Great, thank you very much, and, uh, I just wanted to deliver a hard copy of what I sent to, uh, Paul. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have applicant Thomas and Maricia Messer, site plan review application to modify a previously approved site plan review to construct new separate structure accessory apartment located at 190 Galetta Drive, Warwick and Associates. And Bob, you go bye-bye.
And, uh, send John back.
Yeah, I'll get John.
Tom, did you have any introductory, anything on this?
Cory does.
Cory.
Uh, I have had a, uh, well, we're all, we're all busy, but we tend to, uh, we're, we, we delegate and we share within the, uh, planning department, and since Cory was here when this initially came to the planning board before I was here, uh, I thought it fitting to just give the helm to Cory, and he has been, uh, the, the contact person throughout this and has done lovely work.
Did you wanna initially speak, Cory, with any kind of a summary or not?
Uh, sure, that the applicant is, uh, has submitted a revised site plan and, and new application per the board's request, um, showing, um, showing changes to the site that have happened after the, uh, approval to the first, uh, site plan, uh, showing some architectural changes that were not previously approved. They're also proposing, uh, a new parking, uh, situation and, um, proposing, uh, new steps in landing and egress on the, uh, southern side, uh, of the accessory dwelling. They've also, uh, you know, addressed comments with the revised site plan from the engineering. Uh, applicants also, um, addressed the square footage to the, uh, accessory dwelling, um, which is in your, um, summary, and also Kevin will be able to, uh, touch on that also. Uh, septic location, uh, you also have a, a new referral in your packet from Scott McGann, uh, talking to those revisions. Uh, applicant also has, uh, addressed the utility pole issue in the town right of way. So, yeah, I think, um, Kevin can, can continue on.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Good done, thanks.
Thanks, Cory. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law from here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Tom and Maricia Messer, the owners of 190 Galetta Road, in their application for modification of the site plan decision for the accessory apartment. This is not a new application to many of you. You've seen this before, we've been here before, we've been, uh, to a site, site visit, uh, in early October, and we appreciate your time on that. But I wanna take a moment to recap, uh, why we're here, uh, and what we've done since our last meetings, and what it is, in fact, that we're asking. So, in our previous meeting and, and in prior correspondence, I noted certain changes that had been made to the plans. Uh, specifically, there was a change in the grading on the northwest corner of the dwelling, uh, which was slightly different from what was approved. The septic installation required the strip-out of much more material than was anticipated, and that material couldn't just be blended into the site as had been intended, so a retaining wall was installed to prevent any runoff. Due to the decrease in the grade directly in front of the house for the strip-out, uh, there was a slider that had been originally, uh, proposed and, uh, approved behind the barn doors, which could not be installed 'cause it would be unsafe. So, that was changed to windows, and with that loss of egress, uh, the applicant has proposed a, uh, adding steps in a landing to the southern side of the building. I think it's important to note that these changes were not necessarily made at the request or the desire of the applicant, they're made out of necessity due to grade and soil conditions. Uh, in working through this application, some questions and some issues have been raised by the board and by the engineering department, and as I noted in that correspondence, we've worked to address those, and I wanna review them as many are applicable to the request. Uh, with regards to the retaining wall, I understand some members of the board have expressed some concern with its potential integrity. The applicant's engineer, Jack Landers-Collie, has stated that, in his opinion, it is stable and more than adequate in its current condition. I had expected that Mr. Landers-Collie would be here this evening, but he is not. But I also think it's important to note that a building permit has been obtained from the town, uh, from the building department, and we'll need to have that inspected and closed out. That, that permit has, in fact, been issued and will need to be closed out as part of obtaining a certificate of occupancy for the structure. And following the completion of this matter, it is the intent of the applicant, and they will be seeking a license for the minor encroachment and the landscaping for the board of selectmen on the street layout. There were some questions over the septic system. The tank is located nine point three-one feet from the foundation of the dwelling. We've spoken with Scott McGann, and he's issued a referral to the planning board today that he's, uh, comfortable with that distance, he would not require any additional documentation or variance. The leaching field is more than fifteen feet from the retaining wall as is required, and the setback, uh, from the leaching field to the well at 196 Galetta is ninety-six point three-seven feet. That is an irrigation well which only requires a ten-foot setback. The health department, uh, referral also addresses that particular issue. The dry, there were questions over the dry well, which was part of, uh, the initial app, uh, approval, and was initially installed and reflected on the updated plans. The building dimensions are slightly different than what was approved. The building was, uh, proposed at forty-four feet by twenty-one feet, and the as-built reflects a forty-four point eight-five feet by twenty-one point five-five feet. I've expressed my opinion that this is, uh, de minimis, and it was certainly unintended. However, we met with Rod Palmer, uh, and I actually reviewed the foundation as-built plan that was submitted to the building department with him, and that showed a forty-four point five-five by twenty-one point five-five. The additional increase of point three, uh, reflects the building materials which jut out just slightly from the foundation. Uh, Mr. Palmer agreed that this discrepancy was minor and typical for construction project, and again, was, would be considered de minimis in nature. The minor increase in the square footage of the structure has no appreciable impact. It doesn't affect the lot coverage by structure, the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, or the setbacks, and the square footage of the accessory apartment remains below the allowed eight hundred square feet. Uh, as you believe, you know, this project was permitted when square footage was considered based on the interior square footage of the structure, not on the, as measured from the exterior walls. Based on the as-built plans, the interior square footage of the structure is seven hundred and sixty, uh, square feet. Additionally, the stormwater mitigation, erosion, and sediment control have all been addressed, and that's been confirmed by the engineering department. The road bound, which was damaged, has been restored, that's been confirmed by the engineering department. As to the utility pole, uh, the applicant contacted EverSource to arrange for the installation of the pole. They were unaware that EverSource didn't have the installation approved, and it was supposed to have been erected on their property. EverSource has sent correspondence to the town, uh, noting that this was, in fact, their error, and they've applied for a license. Uh, the pole hearing has been scheduled for December fourth. That brings us to the driveway, which is the new proposed change requested. The original approval placed the driveway directly adjacent to the brick walkway to the existing dwelling. That would require a pretty significant carve into the hill, would require the removal of at least nine significantly sized trees, all having diameter of over eight inches. The location of this proposed driveway was probably ill-considered even at the time it was originally approved. The impact of the tree removal, I don't think, was appreciated by the applicants when they, when they thought that, that they could put the driveway there. The applicant had considered expanding, uh, the driveway in its existing location, but the board did not seem in favor of that proposal at the site visit, indicating that that many cars, uh, would not be conducive to the appearance of a single-family residence. So, what the applicant's proposing is to make use of an existing access road that they have into the lot. It's an existing second driveway, essentially, uh, which has been there for many years. They'd use this driveway, use this access area in the northeast corner, uh, the northwest corner of the site, I, I'm sorry. Doing so would result in, in far less clearing of trees, and I think that the property would much more closely resemble a single-family dwelling as the board would want because of the decrease in the visual impact of, of the removal of those trees and the carving out of that hill. The plan as approved initially would require a really substantial change, and if the board wasn't comfortable, I think, with the driveway being slightly expanded as had been discussed, I don't know that the approved, the originally approved plan is, is much of an improvement over that. I think that the impact of that would be pretty jarring, uh, to remove those trees. You'd really be exposing the existing house much more, which I think goes to the board's intent really of wanting this to appear as a single-family residence with an accessory I think that this application has taken a lot of, uh, unexpected turns, and I think in a lot of ways, the thread has been lost on the conversation. Many of the stated concerns that I've heard, uh, at the last hearing and at the site visit, they, they seem to apply more to the original approval, not to the requested changes. So, while I've discussed those things that we've done to address this, I think it's very helpful and important to focus on what's actually being requested. So, as I've gone over in the correspondence and as I've summarized, there's four things that are really being requested here. A slight alteration to the grading at the southwest corner of the site, resulting in a higher grade and the addition of a retaining wall to prevent runoff. A sliding door behind the barn doors on a street-facing facade of the building could not be installed due to the slope of the land, and the slider resulted in windows, though the barn doors remain as in the original design. The applicants are seeking to add proposed steps and a landing on the southern side of the accessory structure to address the loss of the egress resulting from the change to the slider. The applicants have requested an alteration to the approved parking, so that the parking area will be more obscured, resulting in an improvement to the appearance of the property as a cohesive, single-family unit. I believe that these changes in and of themselves are not significant to detriment, detriments to the project and are, in some cases, improvements. These requests can, and I think should, be approved by the planning board. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Well, my, my biggest problem is they've already done the work, okay? And I have, I think this is, no way looks like architectural effect of a single-family home, and they went ahead and made these changes on their own, and now they're coming back and doing it afterwards. I have a real problem with that, and I think this is a going-forward, could be a big mistake if we make this a policy to do this. I don't know their solution, but they should not have built the building and made those changes without getting approval.
I voted against this last time. Fundamentally, this is not an accessory apartment, and by putting that driveway in, you're defining the role of two houses on one lot, and that's the biggest problem I have with this then and now. And putting this driveway in, you're just confirming that it is two houses on one lot. And that's not an accessory apartment.
Charlie?
I agree that the difference in size is de minimis.
Okay. Hopefully, you could have the steps.
Charlie, could you speak up just a little bit? Oh, sorry. Um, it is de minimis, the, the change in size, so let that, that one go. And adding the steps because of the loss of the slider, now you would probably have to, I'll go back to agreeing with Jim and what he's saying, the appearance of it because the two buildings look so different, uh, from one another. Even the colors don't match. I, I wonder at that. And to add now, uh, second driveway, uh, to, 'cause you would have to regrade the driveway and make it a better driveway so that it won't appear as it does now, which is sort of a, a dirt road lost in the trees. It will definitely be a second driveway. Doesn't seem to be the way to go. Uh, like Jim, I don't know how to fix this. When we were looking at it, uh, during the week, it looked as if you could take the driveway that's there, not enlarge it going toward the house, but bring it down toward, uh, toward the, uh, long side of the, uh, the new structure to pull the cars back and away from the street. I don't know if that's a possibility.
I think there's an issue with the septic, the exist, the se- the, the exist, the septic for the existing dwelling is located, uh, the leaching field is located where you'd have to pull the cars to do that.
Oh. I don't know how you fix that.
So, you know, the, the... I'll, should I, I'll, I'll let comments finish before I respond, or?
That's it?
All I have to say?
Okay, Cam?
Um, I remember when the plan first came, my first thought was... I remember when the plan first came, my first thought was, this is not what our, what we envisioned as an accessory apartment. It looked like two houses on one lot. And as if, if I, I have an acre and my house is to one side and I just plopped another house and said, that's an accessory apartment. It sort of isn't what the plan was and what we, at least what I thought we brought forward to the town. Which was an accessory apartment that didn't jump out like two dwellings on one parcel of land. And it's, it's as if nobody listened, or I shouldn't say that, because many people have. But this is just not what I would like to see the town look like in the future. My concern is, once we say okay to this one, then what stops, then we set a precedent. And what stops the next person, or the next person or the next?
The, the issue with that is you have approved it. It has been approved.
I understand that. I know we've approved it, but what I'm saying is, it just hasn't changed to the way I believe this board, when we voted on accessory apartments. And it's, it's, at least there could have been some coordination, as Charlotte said, of the colors, of the design. But there is nothing that brings this together. And again, when you added that driveway.
The driveway wasn't added. It, the driveway has existed for many years, the second driveway. That hasn't been constructed, that, that, that's, that's an access area that's existed on that site for many years. So that, I don't want the board to think that that proposed, what we're showing here as proposed parking is something that's been carved out that's new. That's been there for a significant length of time.
And used as parking?
It's been used to park, it's been used to bring stuff up to the house, it's been used for stacking of wood down in the proposed parking area. It's been used by the applicants for, this was not something that was created in, in connection with the accessory apartment. And I, I think that's, I think that's an important distinction. So I don't, I don't want anyone to think that that was created pursuant to the accessory apartment. My point was, the, the, the building, the design of the building is what was approved. So, we're not looking to change the design of the building other than, than the, the, the steps in the back. That's the only significant change. We're looking to, to make to the design of the building. What we're looking, you know, so, that, that building as, as built is essentially what was approved. But for a very minor difference in size and, and the back steps.
Which is, to me, not relevant, that small amount of space. And that's not the issue. The issue is, this is not what my, clearly, and I said it from the very first time. It doesn't look to me like it's a, an accessory apartment.
I, I, I can understand where you would say that, but the problem becomes it was approved as an accessory apartment.
I understand.
So what we're just trying to do is take what I, what I think are relatively minor changes to the plan overall. And look for approval on those. We're not looking to reapprove the entire project.
I, I have another question. I'm always curious and I, I tend to ask this question of, how much interaction between the neighbors there have been? In terms of their approval or acceptance of this?
So, there has been, as I think many people on this board know, that Mr. Leary, who I do want to note, I think very highly of, about Leary.
We all do too.
I know, but I just, you know, I'm not impugning anyone. But there's been, he, he has, he has not been necessarily in favor of the, the project. I do know that we, there are other neighbors who are here tonight to support the applicants. I, they, I believe there were some letters of support that were submitted to the ZBA pending the, back in June, we had submitted to the ZBA. Prior to withdrawing to resolve some of these questions. And I know there were letters of support that were submitted at that point.
Okay, that's all I have to say. John?
So I, excuse me, I'd just like to say that, the, the structure was permitted by this board. Pam had the objections right from the very beginning, so it's understandable. She still feels the same way. However, this was our first approved accessory apartment. And we've approved quite a few since then. And this is not like a boilerplate. We can, everyone stands on its own, every, every application. And I think we've done a much better job since this first one. I, I would just like to ask, Mr. Clawer, what can we do with the driveway? I mean, would, would a circular driveway be more, be more beneficial to the applicant? And, and this board? I know there's some trees that have to be removed. And I have not made a site visi, I'm sorry, I missed that site visit.
So, I met with Corey today just to get a bead on where we're going, where we are. And he, he mentioned to me, you know, the possibility of a circular driveway. The issue I think with that is that would still require all the same removal as, as what was originally approved. So if they were going to do that, it probably makes more sense just to do what was originally approved. I think that, that the end result of, of doing that would be the removal of a significant amount of trees. That would change the, the visual characteristics of it pretty dramatically. The way I see it, there's, there's essentially three options for the driveway. There is the driveway as it was originally approved, which had an eight-foot extension here. And the addition of this parking area over here, that would require the removal of approximately nine trees. That's one option. The other option would be the driveway essentially as it had been applied for in June or so with a minor expansion here and an extension down here. But the board had indicated they thought that that would be the appearance of four cars in the driveway and wouldn't be conducive to a single-family home. And I think the third option is what's been proposed here, which is utilizing the existing access road as, as a designated parking area. That I think is a really-
I have a question. He keeps saying existing and here in this plan it says proposed. I'm confused.
Proposed parking is what it says.
No, but you're saying this is an existing driveway. You've referenced that twice and on the plan it says proposed. What are we talking about here?
It is, it is, it's, it's a dirt road that is cut into the property and has been for-
And it says it's proposed.
It is, it is proposed as parking. And it's a dirt-
So it exists, you're saying it exists?
It does exist, yes. But it was not created for the purpose of the accessory apartment.
Maybe it's proposed because you would still have to go forward and get a driveway-
We still need a driveway permit to use a-
So that, it's not permitted, it's just there. And always has been, or for a long time.
As far as I'm aware.
I'm glad to have been reminded by John.
Can we call up an aerial and see if that, you know, this is, we have the ability to look at the aerial photograph and see if that driveway is really there? Okay, I just, I hear testimony all the time. I just- No, but we have the ability to, to pull up an aerial site of this site right now and look at it. So we don't have to listen to opinions. We can look at whether it's there or not. GIS and just zero right in in the aerials and let's see what's there.
I think we were given a photograph of the beginning of that driveway. One time we were. Not here now.
No, it was the old plan.
I, I, yeah. So you can see a cleared area here?
But the curb cut and everything you said in the drive, it looks like there's a bunch of trees there, like you couldn't drive in there.
The, the engineering report actually refers to a second driveway existing on the site. That was the engineering report from June. Refers to a second driveway existing on the site for which, no driveway.
Have we seen that?
That was the, that was the engineering report that was submitted to the town.
Didn't even notice it when I was there, I was looking at it.
Kevin, while you're looking through that, I'd like to make my comments if you don't mind. And then John has some more.
Just a question when the time comes.
Okay. I know Mr. Landers-Collie made a comment about the retaining wall. But I've got at least two problems with that. First, it encroaches into the right-of-way. But secondly, when I look at a retaining wall, I don't expect it to be sloping this way. And the land is sloping this way into it and the hydraulic flow is going this way into it. I know he said it's going to be perfectly stable, it's going to remain stable. I wouldn't want to bet on that for a long period of time. The other thing is, when we were out there for the site visit, I suspect it is not, I would say waterproofed. I don't know how they do it, probably a rubberized coating in it. Because every place there was a seam there, and particularly as you got down lower, I saw water seeping through it. So I really disapprove, I disapprove of that retaining wall and I do think it needs to be redone for all of those counts.
So, my, my response to that would be that the, the building department will have to sign off on whether or not it was constructed properly.
How do they know unless they dig it out? If, whether it's been waterproofed?
I don't, I don't know what their testing methods would be. I, I wouldn't pretend to know. But we will have to close out a building permit and I think that's a perfectly valid condition of any decision, that we close it out prior to occupancy. And, and if the building department said it needs to be torn up and redone, I think that's perfectly valid.
Can you follow through on that, Tom, with this comment or not?
We will, just, just a question. So was the building permit pulled before the wall was put up?
It was pulled after the fact.
That's the whole problem. They go, do it first and then come ask for approval later. That's what they've done through this whole process. That's why we're here.
So therefore, we can't know unless they dig it out, that it was properly done.
Well, I, I spoke with Rod today about the issue and he essentially said that his follow-up will be to go on-site. And assess whether or not the wall is, in the location, it, it is shown on the actual revised site plan. He said he wouldn't really ask for further documentation because it is a, it needed to be permitted, it's over four feet. It's not really a hazardous area in terms of what the wall is holding back. It's holding back, you know, site material, grading. He, he had stated he wouldn't ask for further documentation in terms of whether it was engineered properly or properly built. I'm not sure if he will change his mind afterwards, but that's what he had told me today.
Okay, well, I've got a severe objection to the way this was done. And like I said, any wall I've ever seen sloping that way, when the pressure is this way, goes more and more and more that way over the years. And this one, when I see leakage coming through it, it would indicate to me that it was not waterproofed. And how the heck do you know that after the fact unless you dig it out? Specifically, when I see liquid coming through when we're there. So that's one thing. The other comment I would have is, I don't really like the idea of a second driveway and a second parking area. Yeah, maybe it's going to take some more trees down, but the picture on which tar was sort of superimposed here. Makes it particularly look ugly. It wasn't done at all with concern to the aesthetics. I understand you'll have to take some trees down. But I would prefer to have it a narrower driveway going in so that it looks like a single-family home driveway. It comes up and then it expands. You don't have to take all that number of trees out, I suspect. Nine trees to do what I'm saying.
So I'm not su, I'm not sure I'm following, so?
Well, of course, because you don't have it here. We've got this picture. Okay, and I don't know if you can put it up there, but this is very wide right here. This should be narrower as a single-family home driveway. And have it coming up like this and having expanded right there for another couple of cars. There should be provision for four cars.
So, the, the original plan-
Looks like a major parking lot.
Right, it looks like a major parking lot.
That's what the original plan is, if you, if you look at it, and I, I pause it on this PDF. If you look at what was originally approved. Is twenty feet in depth by an additional twenty feet in depth.
A square essentially.
Essentially, and then with this area expanding. So you have the, the brick walkway and then you have this four, you know, twenty by twenty expansion with an eight-foot extension here. That's what was originally approved. If that's what the board wants to see, the applicants will do that. The thought was that utilizing the, the other driveway, and this is part of the engineering report here. It has my notes handwritten all over it, so I apologize. But it does say there was a second driveway not shown in the plans. We deferred to the zoning board appeals that it should be shown in the revised plans and they actually included a photograph. Of the car parked at the end of it saying, second driveway toward the lot.
I know, I saw that.
But I think there are different questions as to whether or not it was referred to in the engineering report. So it was, it has been.
And John, you had a question you wanted to ask?
That was my question about what was approved originally. Why can't you just build it? I think it looks very nice. That's what we thought.
Build it as approved.
Right.
Right, I think that's what should be done. It puts, it puts parking for the existing home and it puts parking for, for the accessory apartment.
Well, in the way that this is drawn in here, it's showing this is much broader than it, than it was shown on that draw.
That's, I mean, that's, it's a, it's a Photoshop.
I know what it is.
And that, and I, I noted that in the correspondence. The idea, the only idea here for the proposed parking area that we're showing on this plan was that it would result in less of a change to the exterior there. Keeping it what I thought and what the applicants thought would be more with the visual character of a single-family home. That being said, the applicants will certainly build the parking as originally approved if the board would prefer that.
I definitely would because this makes it a two-family lot.
Very much so.
Okay, then, that's-
Excuse me, I have a question. Could you explain what you're adding here?
What was originally approved as a parking area right here, above, adjacent to the walkway.
At what point can it about speak of an-
Well, wait, just a minute, we'll get to you, okay? Are there any further questions or comments, John?
Again, again, I apologize, I didn't make the site visit, but what, what is the material that the retaining wall is made out of?
It's, um-
The block, is it stone? Block. So if it's block, it must have some weeping holes in it, I would suspect.
Well, the issue, I think the, the, the leaking that's been referred to. The applicants in trying to establish ground cover and sedimentation control had set up some temporary irrigation and they were watering at the top of the wall. And I think that was seeping through. That's what was being seen during the site visit. There was a temporary irrigation line. Because the septic system's not being used. So it's nothing, it's not affluent from the septic system. It's, it was a temporary irrigation line that was right at the top of the wall.
But my point is, if it were waterproofed, even temporary irrigation should not be seeping through the wall.
I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what the requirements for retaining wall are.
I know.
So I think that having it signed off by the board of, by, by the building department is the best course of action. Because they're going to make sure that it's built the way they would require it. So they've issued a permit and, you know, unfortunately, it is not uncommon for permits to be issued after the fact on, on a project. It should have, of course, been permitted first. It was not. And part of that was with the intent of preventing runoff. It wasn't done for, you know, I think they would have preferred not to install a retaining wall, all things being equal.
Yeah, it's expensive to do that.
It is. So, you know, the intent there was to prevent the runoff. But to go back to the parking area, if, if that's the board's preference, happy to do that.
I think we should not diverge as far as having a second driveway coming in from the original approval. That's my opinion on this. I don't know if that's what the rest of the board feels or not, but that's my opinion on it. Now, if the board is satisfied, I'd like to get any public-
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Paul.
You mentioned in your letter that Mr. The engineer believes that the wall is stable and adequate. Is he willing to put that in writing with his signature?
I believe so. I, I, I-
He believes, he believes one thing, doesn't necessarily define-
I was of the impression he would be here tonight to speak to that. He unfortunately is not. We, I will certainly request it. When I said believes, it was his opinion that it was a stable wall. We, I will certainly request it. When I said believes, it was his opinion that it was a stable wall. I will request that Mr. Landers-Collie put something in writing to that effect. But I can't say that he will undoubtedly because he's not here for me to ask.
I believe a lot of things.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to get inspected by the, by the building department.
But I think our comments and concerns need to be duly noted so that they actually respond to those.
For sure.
That's my concern with that.
I just want to point something out. We agree that the building inspector does all the building, and he says whether it's good or not. We're the ones to decide whether it has an architectural effect of a single-family home. That's the only thing we have. I don't dispute that these things can be built and pass a building permit, but that's not our job. Okay? Our job is to, does this look like the architectural effect of a single-family home? And I believe all these changes that they went out and did without approval and come back afterwards really make it worse instead of better. And I'm totally frustrated with this thing from day one.
Charlotte?
I'd like to speak to that. I'm glad John reminded me that this was the first one. I think we have learned a lot. I think we changed the language from what we had learned so that this wouldn't happen again, really. And yes, it's different, and they do look like two separate houses. I agree with you. And yet, it's not a bad-looking second house. And I think that we have, we have learned. But we did approve it, so we, we can't go backwards from there and think about that issue all over again. Right now, you said you were going to ask for four things. I only caught three. One is about the grading, one is about the steps, and then the third was about the, the new parking driveway that we seemed to have...
So there, on the front of the, on the front of the house facing the street, there had been a slider that was approved.
That's the steps.
That, well, the steps, the steps and the slider are related. So the slider became a window.
Right, okay.
So, so it was the grading with the retaining wall, the slider becomes a window, the new step in the back, and the driveway.
Okay, I just caught that as three. I don't have an issue with any of those.
Okay, now I...
Which is now three because we're eliminating the driveway.
I'd like to go to the neighbors for any comments they might have on this. And please come up to the microphone and state your name.
My name's Philip and I, we're in Butter, on the other side. There are a couple of things here from my perspective. Just the visuals based on what the town wanted to do with the accessory apartments. They wanted it to look like it was part of the neighborhood or part of, I understand that completely. Also, was the intent of having first place and the reason why. And we've got an argument here why, why we make, we're making a circus to jump through. And at the same time, we go to another town meeting, and we almost have to destroy a neighborhood to get more involved, more houses in for people who live here and work it. So there's a little disparity in what we're saying on one hand, on the other hand, and I'm not saying it to you folks because it's, we're talking different departments, talking different people. I've been looking at this lot for 20 years. This driveway, you don't see. This is the only driveway you see. So it looks like a single family. Twenty years, looks like a single family with that driveway. So I don't know what anybody else is looking at. Even with this, it still looks like a single family. Does it, is it exactly like the original drawings? No, there's a few little changes. Nobody can see the back steps. To me, that takes the back steps out of the question. We're talking about a single family, back steps, nobody, not in a million years will ever see it, not even the neighbors. Most houses, driveway, you drive in, you drive in your garage. Okay, I understand that. How many town, houses in this town have a parking garage next to the house where you come in this way and you drive in that direction? So the slider, you're talking about the front with the door, and the change to windows means nothing to me. We got, we get 5,000 houses in this town that you come in the driveway and you take it, you go into your garage. That's what, I'm looking at it every day. I see this every day. The retaining wall, again, we all have opinions. The way this house, the way this garage or whatever it is looks like compared to the house, there are some differences. That's opinion. That shouldn't be even here unless you're in the store or in the district. Strictly opinion. Would I have done it the same way? Who knows? I could have 10 different colors, I could have, who knows? But the fact is, without that driveway over there, this looks like a single family with a long, a long garage. So you can't even see the back of, you couldn't see the back of. If you were asked for a permit for a garage, all you see is the front. That's a normal distance. Other than opinion on the retaining wall, which, will it weep? Will it stand up? That's CG. I mean, if there's a problem, that's CG, an engineer can address that. I would prefer that the engineers address it. I would like to have opinion on it. Does it weep? Well, is there water going through it? There may be water going through it. The difference is, three feet, the water's going to go down three feet. Again, an engineer, the building department, you know, that's not, I don't, I just don't see why that's a question here. Literally, I would like an education as to why, what the, what your board, what the exact things are that your purview is what your problems are, your problems are that, that we should be addressing here because I'm seeing things that shouldn't even be in here. Should be building department. You know, if this was, if this was accepted and they got a permit for it, and again, like you said, it was the first one, these guys have done the intent, like, like everybody voted from the first place. We voted to have lower income. People who work for the town. We need this kind of housing. These guys are like the poster children for this. And they're getting more grief if somebody came with a pile of money and six lawyers in the room, no offense, and a couple of engineers. They, I've seen it a thousand times in here. People would be backing up to shake their hand. These are working-class people in this town. They've done their best. They're doing a good job, trying to address it, and they're getting caught. This is costing them money every single day that they don't have. I live next to them. This looks, again, it's some opinion. Is it, how I would do it? Well, no, maybe not. It probably isn't. Am I here to talk about whether they tried to do the right thing for this town? Or am I here to tell them what kind of curtains they should have and what color they should be?
Explain design review. We do have, we do have design review.
Has that been done? The first step, was this accepted?
That was the point, some of it didn't happen.
They didn't build what they said they were going to do. That's the whole problem.
You're not the first people in this town to do that, and I can, you can, we probably have a thousand developers that have done that.
So we...
And they didn't change things because they wanted to.
But they didn't ask.
Yeah, sir, I understand because we just had an addition put on our house, and they ran into clay when they put the septic system in. So I know about these things, that you run into unexpected things. But I also know that when these were being built, they immediately went to ask for permission and site review immediately.
And, and I certainly, I could certainly sympathize with what you're saying, and it may have been, certainly would have been the better thing to do. But they don't, this isn't somebody that's paying 16 people to file, to sit and file forms and to have an architect...
I'm not arguing that at all. I'm arguing, as is the rest of the board, that it's permitting after the fact instead of getting approval when you ran into the problem.
And I understand that. So, so I guess what I would like to know is what specifically the board is looking for. Not to, not to punish them for what they did, but the grounds for which they are asking for, which specific changes and the grounds they're asking for, specifically right off the bat, the driveway.
You are asking what we decided that has not been done, that we have the purview for decision. And that is the placement of the driveway, that is the landscaping, that is the effect with all of this of it looking like a single-family house with, in this case, an accessory that is supposed to look like a barn or a garage that has been converted. So what we're questioning tonight is, okay, yeah, that retaining wall may or may not be a part of our purview, but it kind of is because it's part of the landscaping look, too. So these are the things that we are looking at that we can comment on tonight, and we are doing so. Other things that have to do with engineering, no. With septic system, that's board of health. No, we can't. That's not where we are, and that's not what we're questioning.
So, so if we take the retaining wall, your issue is not whether it works, it's how it looks, as you said, your words were appearance.
It is appearance. Could I, Charlotte, go ahead.
We understand that you're the neighbor and that you're speaking in favor of allowing the neighbors to go forward. You approve of that. We understand that. I think that we could just...
I'm not so much, this is just specifically them. This is more the reason why the town voted to, for this sort of thing in the first place. And the difference we see in this town between people that have a bunch of money and develop and the people that are trying to do something.
We're not going to go there.
No, no, I know, no, I'm not, and it's not, and it's no...
Pat, I'd like to speak.
That's the money that it takes to...
No, I want to make it clear. We advocated, this is the group that advocated for this bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, we created it, we worked for years to get it passed. And the biggest problem we had is people said to us, "Do not make, turn it into two houses on one lot." And I promised them we wouldn't do it, and this one's done it right out from the get. And that's the only thing we get to comment on, is the architectural effect. You're right, everything else is building permits and engineers, and we're not qualified for it. But guess what? We do get the side of it has the architectural effect, and that's all we're saying.
Okay, all right, and I, and I, and I understand that, and I certainly, and I certainly appreciate that.
We're not going to argue.
No, 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 I appreciate that. I understand. This is an education both ways. This is more...
We're the ones that crafted this, spent years to do this bylaw.
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate, if you put a lot of time in that, I appreciate that.
We did, and we put a lot of time into this application, too.
Specifically, if, I mean, if you, you know, I appreciate that.
So I thank you for your comments. We need to move on to other people who might have comments. Is there any...
I would like if you just specify what specific things you're going to hold, question.
Well, we did.
Okay, and if I could read that down, down to my, I'd be happy with that, that's fine.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Bob?
I'm Spockly, I live at 196 Scaletta Drive. I'm in Director Butter. And the argument about what exists there now, it was approved. It was approved by this board just as it, as it exists now, is approved by the ZBA. That ship has sailed. My, I was never not in favor of this project because, like Jim said, I was part of this board that crafted this bylaw. My objections at the time were because the way the bylaw was applied in this situation, it did not look like an accessory dwelling. The square footage was not calculated according to what was in the bylaw that had a very distinct and concrete way of calculating accessory structure, square footage. It's right in the definitions. That, none of that passed muster when I sent the letters to this board or to the ZBA. My concern was the 18-foot elevation change between the location here and my property. To me, this was the worst possible location you could put this structure. When you're looking at 18-foot difference in elevation versus the northeast corner where you have a two-foot elevation difference. But besides that, that, that's all sailed. You know, the task right now is to determine what the driveway is. The discussion about the wall, Scott Shooter brought up the point about the weeping through the wall. I talked to Scott McGann this week. Says it, it has something to do with the 15-foot breakout, that he wanted to take a look at it because when he inspected it, the wall was not there. So that's a health department issue. It's not just a building commissioner. It's a health department issue. But I, I think we need to get back on to what we're here to do tonight is to determine what driveway is going to be, where it should be. And, and let's move on with this. I mean, like I said, the ship has sailed. Let's, let's finish this up. We've all learned from this. We've had numerous other accessory apartments come before us that have sailed through. One meeting, and they've sailed through. This was just a poorly conceived design, and this is the result of it. And it's time to, to put this to rest.
So I think you've heard John's, in my opinion, on the driveway, going back to what we approved.
I agree.
Pam, you agree?
I agree.
Okay. Okay. So we've got six of us saying, "Go back to what we approved."
So, that's it. And you?
We need to take a vote, Tom, on this site plan review. We want the driveway, somebody should make a motion. We want the driveway to go back to the original.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
The planning board's standard operating procedures have been to direct staff to produce a, a, a motion, a, a, a decision for you to review. So I'm under the impression that you would like the staff to put together a motion for you to vote on at the next meeting that involves changes to the site that, or elimination of the extra driveway. So if he can flesh that out, we'll bring that back to you on December 10th for a vote.
But change him on the plan, too. We can't have this proposed driveway sitting on this plan like we're approving it.
Right, right.
We can submit a revised...
It'll be there, we do.
We, we can submit a revised plan. But I do want to point out that, that that is an existing access area. We won't, it won't be formalized as a driveway, and then nothing will page.
Wait a second. I don't remember that being on the existing plan when they first presented this. I remember a totally different structure. Kevin, you weren't even here. They, this, there's so many changes from the first time that this was presented, you know.
That wasn't on the original plan, that it was functionally being used to park a truck or to...
But they had a carport on this thing. They had all, it was, it was so many different changes from, when we say what was originally proposed.
Well, I think it's, I think it's fair to say what was originally approved is probably the better...
So we wanted to go back to what...
Yeah, it was a compromise trying to let them...
We can remove the proposed parking designation on that area. That's perfectly fine, and we'll, we'll revise the plan to show the original parking. And I, I think that's the only change we need to have to the plan, if I'm, if I'm reading the board correctly.
Adding some steps.
Well, the, yeah, the steps are on, on there. So the only change will be that, that parking area.
Okay.
And we can have that submitted, I mean, not this week, but probably next week, early next week.
Fine, we don't meet until the 10th.
But absolutely have them before the 10th.
Yes, I'll have it prior to the hearing.
So as I understand it, you're going to submit a revised plan that shows one driveway and the parking where it was originally proposed in the plan of 10/28/2001?
Uh, yeah, yes.
And the retaining wall, since it is there, sort of comes under our purview, too. So there are those questions.
So I think, I think the best way to resolve that is, is through the building department.
And the health department.
The health department referral did reflect that the leaching field was setback 15 feet, in today's referral.
Yeah, but from Bob's testimony today, Mr. McGann wishes to look at it again. I think that's what I understood.
The referral came over at about 4 o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, we don't know about that.
You have the revised referral in your packet to review.
Ah, okay.
It's beyond the breakout point, the retaining wall, so... And we're also looking for a certification from the engineer that the retaining wall is sufficient in... The engineer believes it is stable. Paul would like it in writing that the wall is stable, so we're looking for a letter from the engineer stating that the retaining wall as installed is in fact stable.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this before we move on? Thank you. Okay. So we are going to move on, and there, on the 10th, there will be a decision for us to discuss and vote on. Thank you.
I just want to say that I know there's been a lot of time and consideration put into this project. I appreciate the board's time. We appreciate you working with us to find a solution. So thank you.
On the ground, we've got to solve it. You know, I've got to take a bulldozer to it.
Well, we appreciate it nonetheless.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You all have a good Thanksgiving, too, please.
Thank you.
A nice time of year. Planning board discussion. We have here in front of us, John Drewley. Do you want to speak to this, John, and explain a little bit more? Because this is the second iteration we've gotten on it. And I'm sorry, but I did not have the time to compare this against the first one, so it would be so fine.
Sure. So the first one that I proposed for consideration was some ideas that I, that I have adopted as we've gone along through various meetings and joint meetings with selectmen with the Valma Housing Group. and joint meetings with selectmen with, uh, Falmouth Housing Group. And I vetted, I vetted some of those ideas with Laura Schufelt, who was a housing expert with Mass Housing. And she sent me back some notes, so I refined this a little bit. And even what you have in front of you this evening, I'm gonna make a couple of minor adjustments in the wording that she sent to me yesterday. But I'll, I, I'm trying to help, help this board come up with a bylaw that will help create affordable housing and additional housing that we need in the town of Falmouth. So I'll just, I'll read it, and then we can discuss it, if that's all right?
That's fine. I would like to ask a question of you to begin with, though. Do you have any timeframe in mind for creating a bylaw that might accomplish this?
No.
Okay.
I, I wanna start with discussion.
Just...
Please.
Get going.
Yes.
I'll point out, this is one of the low-hanging fruit that we discussed five years ago.
Oh, I know, that's why we're wondering.
Can I just, I'm gonna ask that you come to the Affordable Housing Committee? Because...
As, as a paid consultant?
As a friend of affordable housing. Because what I don't want is to see us doing anything contrary to each other.
Sure, of course.
And I think this is exceedingly helpful because you're talking about rental as opposed to single-family homes popping up, affordable single-family homes, when in fact the housing production plan is pretty straightforward about the need for rental units. So I think we could certainly use to hear from you, and I think it would be very helpful for our committee.
Okay, thank you.
Third Thursday of every month at three o'clock.
Okay. So this is for our board for this evening. And I, I titled it Falmouth Affordable Housing Rental Bylaw. And I have purposes are to help solve affordable rental crisis, to create a defense against unwanted forty B developments, create affordable senior and workforce housing, to also help keep our adult children and seniors in our community, also to help Falmouth get to the required ten percent affordable housing, to also have direction and control of where rental housing gets built, and to help meet needs shown in our housing production plan and local comprehensive plan. So I have ten guidelines here. And the first one, and again, I vet, I vetted these with, through Laura Schufelt. And the first one says to allow twenty units per acre density in B1, B2, and possibly light industrial zoning districts. Number two, allowed by right with planning board approval after site plan and design review approval. And that's a key, that's very key, to be allowed by right. Number three, all units will be year-round rentals. Number four, all units will meet requirements necessary to count toward the town's required ten percent subsidized housing inventory. Number five, minimum of twenty-five percent of the approved units will be rented to, and this is a correction, to households at or below area median income of eighty percent. That would be twenty-five percent of the units and of the, of households. Number six, the balance of the units may be rented at market rate. I had originally will be, but it may be rented at market rate. Number seven, the units will qualify for some town funding, possibly CPA funds, which may also allow for some state funding. And may, and that, those two items may allow for some protection against foreclosure for any approved development. And that's not, I can't say that's guaranteed, but it's a possibility. Number eight, all units will be connected to the town sewer or have denitrification septic systems if they are in a coastal pond overlay district. Number nine, all rental developments approved under this bylaw will have DHCD as a subsidizing agency. And, and that is a requirement for them to be approved on the SHI. And number ten, enforcement and monitoring oversight will be handled by DHCD or the town or a local agent. And that's my original thoughts, second, secondary original thoughts. And I can answer some questions, 'cause again, I, I vetted this with Laura, and she's an expert in this area. And may, may I just say one other thing? After I put this together, I had a conversation with town planner, with Tom, and Tom said that we're not allowed to make apartment bylaws. It has to be multi-family bylaw. Am I, am I saying it correctly?
That's what I understand. You can't regulate by ownership.
Unfortunately, I would like to be the first, but he says that it wouldn't, it wouldn't make it through the state, so... But the, the intent is to make it rentals. And what Laura said to me is by putting in minimum of twenty-five percent of the units would be at eighty percent or, or below would be a deterrent for someone to build for-sale units. And, and these, these are, in my vision, could be units that are self, self-standing on a, say, a one-acre parcel or a half-acre parcel. Or they could be part of multifamily, they could be on the second floor with stores or apartments on the first floor. And, and I, I vetted the, um, the financial numbers with Mr. Fox, who's an expert in numbers. And, and as a, as standalone rentals only, anybody that would develop these would, would do quite well financially. And yet we would get, if they're, if they are rentals, all of them will count toward the SHI.
Whether they're affordable or not.
Yes, and, and my, my real, my real thought was we've had such consternation over forty B developments. So I felt, why doesn't this board take control of a bylaw? Sort of like create our own forty B districts. And they're not forty Bs, but they would count toward our ten percent. And once the town meets the ten percent, then it has control over, over forty Bs. So, um, that, that was my, my impetus, is to combat forty B, unwanted forty B developments and give some direction to our community where our housing is gonna be. We desperately need it. And, and this would allow the for-profit developers to do what they do best. And property owners.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't fold this into revising the conversion bylaw? 'Cause if, you know, we have a bunch of old houses in, in town, big old houses, and we're restricted pretty much by what we can do with them by the conversion bylaw. And if we, if we were able to work within that, we might be able to achieve some of this where we could increase the density to twenty per acre. And even though it isn't actually work out to be, if you got a half acre, you're looking at ten units on that acre, or half acre. If that might be a first, first place to start was, would be to change some of that. Like, it's been a while since I've looked at that law, but I'm just wondering if, if you looked at that, John?
It, it would be a possibility, but again, my thought here is if it's in business districts, everybody knows what a business district is.
Yeah.
And if it's in a house that's in a neighborhood already, then that may be an unwanted occurrence.
Yeah.
If it's in a neighborhood...
Sort of like, we're gonna, we're gonna review a forty B shortly after this, it's gonna be on Shore Street.
Yeah.
So Shore Street, the neighbors may say, "Oh, my God, oh, my goodness, we don't want this here."
Yeah.
But, and I'm not saying that, that you're, that it wouldn't work in what you're talking about, but my purpose was to designate where these would go, and everyone would know. And, and we need, we need housing, I was thinking that, why not put it in the village centers? Why not let every village participate in this in one form or another? And, and there are some blighted, um, uh, commercial areas. We have, you know, where, where it's maybe a half-acre parcel, there's five stores. They were built in nineteen seventy-five, and they looked like nineteen seventy-five, but the owners can't afford to do any better because their rents are low. And maybe this will allow somebody to buy the property, revitalize it, put some apartments on the second floor. If, if they go on the second floor, they have no land cost.
Yeah.
And this allows someone to really make money with it. But still, we get twenty-five percent of them affordable, and a hundred percent of them count toward our, our SHI. I mean, what, what did, what did the housing production study say? We need like six hundred apartments.
A lot.
And, and there's a lot being built right now, I, I wanna say that, so, you know, we're on, we're on TV, the people are watching. There's a lot, there are apartments that are getting built now. Probably if you add them together, close to ninety or a hundred that have been approved.
Affordable?
Yes.
Not that many.
I'll, I'll count them out for you.
Okay, because, you know, what we've been told is we need seventy-two a year in order to forestall a forty B. And right now, uh, Tom, do you have any idea? I thought it was something like fifty-two units that are right now in the pipeline.
I, I, I don't have that number, no. But, and I'm, I, I looked at Cory to wonder where those apartments are, 'cause I'm, you know, I, I, I'm not familiar with these apartments that are being built. I know most of the forty Bs we've seen are three-bedroom, single-family detached. And we keep replying to every request for forty Bs with the same reply from the town that we've seen a lot of three-bedroom, single-family detached ownership units, and we like to seize some different units and some diversity of units, but we're just not seeing that. So I'm not really sure...
So I, I can, I can just address that a little bit. 'Cause I'm, as, as this board's representative to the CPC, I'm also their representative on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which...
Oh, is this Clipper ship you're talking about?
No.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so, um, we've, we've approved funding for ten units in North Falmouth, which haven't been built yet, but it's been, we've approved that funding. We've approved funding for ten units of workforce housing on Gifford Street. And they've just come in front of us this week for an additional ten units. And again, they're not being built yet, but they will get built. So that's thirty, that's thirty units. We've helped fund fifteen out of twenty units that are going up on Brick Hill Road right now. So that's, so that's, all twenty of those are gonna count toward the SHI. So how much is that, fifty?
No, thirty-five.
That's fifty.
Seven units in Falmouth Heights that are already approved.
Thirty and twenty is fifty, right?
No, but where were the thirty?
So ten in North Falmouth.
Right.
Twenty on Gifford Street.
Okay, but those are being phased.
Yes, but they're gonna get built.
Eventually, okay.
So...
The town's building thirty-five on Spring Bar's Road?
I thought it was forty.
Forty?
Forty.
Forty.
So the numbers are up there. I think John's number's correct.
So that's ninety.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know this, I, I know this hasn't been totally approved yet, but we have Liberty Green. If that gets through the courts and, and they prevail and they build, that, all of those are gonna count, that's another hundred units. So there's more going on than, and it hasn't all happened yet, but it's all, it's all in the works. But if we can create a bylaw, this board can create a bylaw that will help build apartments in, in designated areas in this town, it will help ward off any unwanted forty Bs, it will. Because we'll reach our goal, number one. And number two, it's going to help a lot of people that need housing. It's just unbelievable how many people need housing that they can afford to live in. And even these apartments, that, if they do get built, that aren't, that, that are market rate, the more market rate units that get built and affordable units that get built, the more it puts a cap on the increase of rents in, in our community. It's supply and demand, that's just, is never gonna change. We have huge demand, low supply, what's happening to the rents? So...
Charlotte, you wanted to say something?
I do, thank you, John, this really moves it really forward. Over a year, year and a half ago, Pat and I brought in a multifamily zoning recommendation that just dropped out of sight. Nothing happened to it, 'cause there was so much else going on. It's great to see this come back. I'd like to, I think really, and everyone's convinced of the need and the desire and so forth, so it might be time really to look at the details very, very carefully. So take a picture of number one, B1, B2. We'd have to look really carefully at that map. 'Cause I am picturing the zoning that I'm most familiar with is that on Old Main Street in North Falmouth, because I live up that way. And picturing a twenty-unit building appearing suddenly on Old Main Street on the entire, anywhere where it's now zoned...
It's B3, I think, is what you're talking about.
It's business zoning up there.
But it's B3.
Is it B3?
I believe it is, we could check, wanna pull the map up and see it?
I think that's the important thing, is to check.
I believe that's the difference.
Because this is never gets through town meeting, is my point.
B1 and B2, B1 is Main Street.
Right downtown, Main Street.
And B2 is like Davis Straits, all the really busy, busy centers. And the B3 is the more area that you're, I believe if you, I'm going from memory, I'd rather...
Davisville, B2?
And generally, the further away from the center you get to, the number changes.
Right, we need it there though.
One, two, three.
Because when we had been talking about this before, it was going to be in the Davis Straits area was the multifamily zone.
Right, but I think, I think your concern in North Falmouth, it's actually B3. But I'm going from memory, I'd rather, you know, we have this resource here, we can just look it up. B3, right?
Yeah.
See, that, I was right, so it, B1, so he's not talking about North Falmouth.
We could add it though, if you want.
I think that it would be a killer, so no, not a good idea. If this is effectively restricting it to the Davis Straits area...
Well, you can see it there. I mean, I think our predecessors, when they laid out the B1s and B2s and B3s, took that into consideration.
Well, let's look exactly, where is B1 and B2?
Well, B1 is only on Main Street and Woods Hole. B2, you could see it a little bit there, there's the...
So B1 is in Woods Hole?
Yes.
A little bit, yeah.
Whereabouts?
The whole, well, again, I don't have it memorized in my head. But I, I believe that if you look at Main Street and Woods Hole, it's also B1. 'Cause the buildings are built right on, everywhere you see buildings built out to the street is B1.
Is B1?
We'll, we'll, we'll generate some maps for you for our next discussion, to show you...
I wanna give a little bit of credit here, too, to Mr. Turkington, because I shared this with him originally, and he helped make some corrections here. Some of this are, are his suggestions also.
Well, that's good to know, but what I'm saying is, let's do it, and let's set a timeframe, so it actually, something happens this time. This is terrific to have this. And the, you're calling it a bylaw, we were calling it multifamily zoning. Is there any effective difference? There's not.
Well, I'm just...
No, just so...
I had to put a title on it, so...
Right. Could you go back and explain, that went by so quickly, about you can't, you cannot say rental only? You can't call them apartments? What was that you can't do?
Yeah. Zoning essentially regulates uses. It regulates the size and the bulk and the placement of buildings. It doesn't regulate ownership. You can say, "I wanna do multifamily, I wanna do a building that's, you know, forty thousand square feet in these districts." But I have not seen an instance where you zone by ownership or by, by the type of ownership. And in fact, we've had the Attorney General shoot down a zoning bylaw in Kingston where we zone something, this is for cellular structures, where municipal property would be allowed to put a, a, a structure on, a cellular structure. And the Attorney General said, "Well, no, you can't zone based on ownership." Now, that's a different fact of putting it on a, a commercial, I mean, on municipal property. But it gets back to, you regulate uses and you regulate size, bulk, and location, but you don't regulate, you don't zone by ownership to say this is the apartment district. I may be wrong, and we'll take a look at it, but I'm fairly certain that you can't regulate... I may be wrong, uh, and we'll take a look at it, but I'm fairly certain that you can't regulate by ownership.
So which was the one, John, that you thought would push people toward rentals rather than ownership?
I'm sorry?
Which provision here did you say would...
Where, where it says that twenty-five percent of them, uh...
Minimum of twenty-five percent?
Minimum of twenty-five percent are for people, are for households at or below the area median income of eighty percent. So if somebody tried to build condominiums and sell them, they'd have to sell twenty-five percent of them at a lower price. And, and it would make it more prohibitive for them to do it.
And, and here in number four, when they meet the, uh, requirements necessary to count, what are those requirements? Isn't that saying the same thing about the income?
Well, I pretty much put them in, in line here.
Yeah.
So, what, what I received from Laura is, and this was kind of a summary, but she said, there are three things a unit needs to be counted. Number one, it needs to be created as a forty B or local action, which can be funds from CPA or the trust, it can be donation of land from the town, it can be zoning relief, including special permit, it could be inclusionary zoning, et cetera. So this would be zoning relief for the special permit, in my opinion. Also, I put in there that, um, you have to get some funds from, um, the town, whether it be CPA, and it could be, I believe it could be minimal, it could be five thousand dollars a unit, it could be maybe two thousand dollars a unit. Uh, that needs to be worked out, but some funding from the community allows it to be counted toward the S H I, the units. Number two, you have to have a deed restriction with a regulatory agreement approved by D H C D. And that's a pretty simple thing to, to happen. It's not real complicated. It's not a full, like a forty B hearing, but D H C D would have to approve these units. And number three, open and fair marketing. So that, if their units are originally built, uh, you'd have to have a law for the, the twenty-five percent, or they have to be, uh, vetted, uh, through an agency. And as, and on re-rentals, they would have to be, uh, approved. We'd have to have a monitoring agent, either the D H C D, uh, the town, or, uh, they could hire, uh, an agent, a local agent that would do the vetting. So like, like, I think that, uh, I, I don't want to misspeak, but I think it's either the town of Mashpee, the town of Yarmouth is, uh, doing this vetting for, um, affordable housing units in, in other communities. But you'd always have oversight. And, and we have a housing, uh, court coordinator now that is keeping track and, you know, everything is really getting, uh, fine tuned the way it should be, so... But that's the answer, that's what Laura sent me. That, these are, these are the conditions.
Um, I think it's very similar to what we, what we had.
Well, yeah.
Actually, although we had said, because we had, um, just been to the HACs, a series of seminars, where they were advising twenty-one units, but twenty unit, where did the twenty come from, John? That's...
That's, uh, in the development world, that's pretty much the standard, to make it, to make a, a project work, twenty units per acre.
They've got commissions recommending that. Paul?
A lot of thought went into this, John, thank you. I had, uh, three comments. One is, does this apply to new construction or also reconstruction?
Either way.
Either.
Well, we should probably say that, and the purpose is that. Because I think there's an opportunity to do reconstruction that we're missing. Secondly, I like a lot of your guidelines, uh, increasing density, um, location at town sewer. I think that's important. I'm not sure about foreclosure protection. I don't know how you deal with that issue, whether you can, but I may ask.
I, I don't know for sure, uh, or not.
And the third one is, looking at these areas with B one and B two, there's not that many areas. We might want to take a look at how many areas open space, for example. Well, we might be able to put these in. I don't know how difficult that would be, but we might get a better handle on, you know, it's nice to say increased density in B one and B two, but is there space in many of these areas to put increased density buildings?
Well, what I was trying to say, Paul, is, first of all, we'd have to, really have to vet that. But I, I'm trying to put it so that everyone knows where they're gonna possibly be built.
Right.
Not a criticism, but I think it's a good start.
Uh, again, they, they could go on the second floor of existing buildings. Uh, if there's a really ugly little shopping plaza, somebody could buy it and, and tear it down, and maybe put stores, nice stores, you know, cuter looking stores on the first floor, and three or four apartments on the second floor. Uh, we, as a board, we'd have to address parking requirements. That was what I put in, one of my original ones, was reduce parking requirement. But that's something that would, would happen automatically. Because if they're, if they're in the areas where, uh, public transportation goes by, uh, maybe you don't need cars.
I, I think this is an important, uh, piece to the Davis Straits, uh...
Absolutely.
Area.
I, I don't want to mix it up with Davis Straits, because I think that's gonna be a special place, but...
Yeah.
But it's similar.
But I, but I'm just wondering if we, if we have something there that, uh, that we can kind of nudge people towards when, uh, when we do redevelop, uh, Davis Straits.
I'm not understanding your comment, John. This seems perfectly tailored for Davis Straits.
Well, I don't think on Davis Straits, there's an eighty percent or twenty-five percent.
He doesn't want to conflate it, because this is its own special thing.
Yes.
And Davis Straits will be its own special thing. They might be very similar.
Might be very similar.
But we may not want the same rules to apply.
Correct. You want more, you may want more density at Davis Straits than you're gonna want.
Just a, a couple of things. Um, light industrial A, when we created light industrial C, we were responding to a need that all our light industrial A and B had been built into housing. Because we didn't restrict it from it. And so all these areas we had set aside, you'll know them as the Carlson Road Development, or Treetops, or all these things. Those are in our industrial lands that we allowed housing to go in, and we built housing, and we said, well, that was a mistake, folks. Because we, in order to have good zoning, you have to have a balance. You gotta have industrial, you gotta have business. So, we kind of lost our balance there. So I'd be cautious about going to light industrial A. Maybe it's the right thing, but that, we had already realized that that was a mistake ten years ago.
Well, the other reason being too, is that we'd like to see these, when you say on sewer, you also want them to be closer to amenities.
Right. Walking distance to villages and everything. And the oth, the other thing, the really important part is, if you remembered, I, I brought it up when I did, uh, Density Done Right, our B two zoning is broken. It, we, when you try to build a B two zoning, you get a two thousand square foot apartment. Okay, that's crazy.
Change that.
Yes, this would change that. It is really the density that has to be fixed. And, uh, this would, this would change that right away.
You know, it's nine twenty, we really need to be moving a while.
I'm, I'm sorry, I've just had it, those two.
But before we do, what are the next steps, so that this isn't a good conversation, but there's no follow-up? What happens next to move this?
Well, I will be putting some maps together for you, so you understand at least the areas that we're talking about.
And, and just quickly, we might want to consider public use. Look at all those P U's up there.
Yeah. Well, we might, but our next step is, is the maps. Yeah. And that'd be a funny place to put an apartment building.
Just one comment, John, I think you're talking about deeds that survive foreclosure. That's...
Correct.
Yeah.
And that depends on, on the mortgage, how, how the...
Right, but we're trying, we're working really hard to make sure that everything in our stock now, we maintain.
Yes.
And some of the deeds are being rewritten, and the lawyers are on it, so... Can, can I suggest that we invite the Affordable Housing Committee, because we're definitely duplicating a lot of, a lot of the issues? And I think it would be very helpful to have a whole committee. I mean, we don't have that many people. But, because we're all talking about the very same thing.
Well, we're already all, I think, pretty much in agreement. On our purposes, we're actually getting down to, uh, the, the nitty gritty here that really is a, a planning board purview. Do you think they're interested in looking at the maps?
Why don't you share this with them and get some on this?
Is that okay?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is the November twenty nineteen town meeting recap. Does anybody have anything to say, or do you want to scoot on by it?
Uh, just a comment on Ralph Herbst's letter to the, to the paper about the attendance.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah. It was interesting, so I, I recommend people read his letter.
What did he have to say?
Uh, how, uh, people who become town meeting members, a lot of them aren't showing up. That, uh, there was actually a point where somebody asked after a break, uh, to recount, to see if they had a quarrel, so...
Well, years ago, that was a big problem.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
It was a good letter.
Yeah.
Very good letter.
It was. Okay.
Hey, Charlotte, Ralph used to live in that other town. Did he? That starts with an A, yep. He already headed in for that uptown.
Just, just an FYI.
Shall never be mentioned.
The town that shall never be mentioned.
Okay, um, we have here the forty Shore Street, forty B, referral to the Z B A. Tom, what do you want us to do with this?
Well...
Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, has asked, uh, previously for comments from the board regarding, uh, forty Bs. Based on the perspective that the town, the planning board tends to work more in subdivisions than the Z B A does. Uh, so if we had a, a forty B that was essentially a roadway, much like Locust Field was, we'd be able to sort of, uh, uh, comment on that. In this case, this is more of an infill development, sort of like what, uh, Mr. Drew was just talking about. So, uh, this is the location of, uh, the, the proposed forty B. It's on forty Shore Street, it's right around the corner. And this is exactly the, the location that we want to see affordable housing. We've talked about it in H P P and other places, that, that we want them near services, so from that perspective, I think it, it very much hits the mark. Uh, when we talk about the types of units that we have been looking for, uh, not necessarily. These are three and four-bedroom units. So here's a site plan of the property right now. So the existing house is right here, Building A, uh, on, uh, forty Shore Street. And so what they propose to do is renovate, uh, forty Shore Street and then add seven new units of housing. Uh, the unit on the front, forty Shore Street, is fifteen hundred and thirty square feet. Uh, the remaining units are twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred and twenty-six hundred feet, in three and four-bedroom units. So, they propose Building A, the historic building, as one of the affordable units. Largely because they don't believe they can get the money on the market, uh, for that unit in its size and its configuration, they could for the others. Uh, my concern about this has been, when we look at the premise of forty B, that, uh, the unit should be largely indistinguishable from the exterior. If you've got one unit that's fifteen hundred and thirty square feet, uh, and then you've got a twenty-one hundred square foot unit, and then the remaining units are twenty-six hundred square feet, that seems a bit disproportionate to me. And, uh, uh, the developer has been very adamant that they want to make that an affordable unit. Uh, but to my point, uh, you're gonna have, uh, this sort of, uh, easily distinguishable unit, that's, uh, the affordable unit versus the market rate units. They've calculated they can get twenty-eight bedrooms on the site with their septic system. Uh, so in order to make that happen, uh, they've made a lot of these, of other units, uh, four-bedroom units. So there are four-bedroom and three-bedroom market rate units. There are two three-bedroom units, is the affordable ones. One's twenty-one hundred square foot, and one is fifteen hundred and thirty square foot on the site. Um, I said, location-wise, is exactly where we'd like to see it at. They are not rental units, they are homeownership, uh, they are not two-bedrooms, they are not smaller units, they are threes and fours. Largely for the developer can maximize the cost of, uh, or the price of the market rate units, because that's how forty B works. Is that the market rate units have to underwrite the affordable units. To what extent that is, uh, I don't know, because I don't look at the pro forma, uh, nor is it really one of those things that the Zoning Board of Appeals typically looks at. But from the parameters of what's up with forty B, can you distinguish the affordables from the, uh, from the market rate units? I know Bob and I have talked about the development, the Habitat put together, where there were a variety of different units. But as I understand, in that development, one hundred percent of the units were affordable. So this was, uh, essentially a, a neighborhood a hundred percent of affordable, uh, and for, you know, and that, that gets back to, what can you permit? Well, you can permit anything that someone doesn't appeal. Uh, so, location-wise, just in the right spot. But th, those are my concerns, but I don't want to impose my concerns on the planning board. From a design perspective, this is exactly what we like to see, infill development. You've got a lot, there's additional capacity there. Uh, this won't be on the sewer, it'll be in a septic system. And I believe one of John Drewley's comments is, will it be a nitrogen, uh, septic system, or will it be a, a conventional septic system? Uh, th, those are things I'm not necessarily privy to without, you know, digging a little deeper into the file. But the Zoning Board of Appeals would like the planning board's comments on how they feel about, uh, this particular development. And, uh, any comments that you have would be welcome by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe they opened this hearing on December seventh. So whatever sort of things you folks have to say, we will write it up and submit it to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
You want these comments to take place in this meeting, or just because of when they're opening?
Well, uh, I, I don't want to, you know, drop this cold on you. If, uh, if we've got a consensus on those sort of things, we can certainly, uh, add them to. Uh, but if they open the hearing on December seventh, um, they certainly don't close the hearing on December seventh.
No, but I wondered how long a period we'd have. Again, we're up against the holiday period. Yeah, that's...
Is that in the coastal pond overlay district?
Somebody asked me that question today. I was gonna look that up, wasn't I, John?
Well, you can do it, you can...
It probably is.
It probably is.
Almost everything in town is.
Well, it's pretty close to the water, I mean, compared to...
That's the density.
I would just like to make three, three comments, three suggestions.
Okay.
Uh, essentially eight units per acre.
Uh, one is that, uh, I think that the town plan is correct, that it's a terrific location, and exactly what we're looking for is infill. But, um, as far as, uh, one of the affordable units being the, the smaller unit out by the road, I don't have a problem with that. If they, if it's twenty percent smaller than the other units, it should be priced twenty percent less. So if it can be sold at two-twenty, affordable, it should be, excuse me, one-eighty, one-eighty-five, somewhere in that range. That would be my recommendation. Number two, um, any development over five units, according to our planning board, has to have denitification, so I would, and it may have, I was trying to look at the plans today. They're very complex, the septic plans, I couldn't determine whether it was denitification or not. But I think very strongly that should be, uh, recommendation. And the third recommendation, uh, is, these are gonna be condominiums. The affordable units should pay a condominium fee based on their value. Not, not, um, one-eighth of what the... In other words, if it's a eight-hundred thousand dollar unit is paying six hundred dollars a month, the affordable unit should not be paying six hundred dollars a month. It should be based on their value. I think that's really important, especially in a small, it's only eight units. You don't want to overwhelm, uh, you don't want to make it unaffordable.
The other thing I was look, looking at here too, is that the regular units, the market rate units are restricted age fifty-five plus. There's no age restriction on the affordable.
I think that's terrific, actually.
Well, I think it's terrific, but I don't know what it's going to do for the selling of the market rate.
Title V issue, it actually allows greater, go fifty-five plus, it actually allows greater density on the Title V. That's how you do it. It, it, the septic, it's a septic issue, it's a little, it's a little juice that the, uh, developers do, because it helps them with the Title V. Instead of a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, it's like, uh, it's, it's a, it's a lower number, and the math works out. That's how they fit so many units.
Could they at all be convinced to make some of these units smaller? So they'd have more units, but a lesser price than the, what is it, eight-hundred and eighty thousand? Because when you're talking about four-bedroom units and you're looking at fifty-five plus, it makes no sense. When it's a prime place to put these sorts of units. So I would say...
Yeah, that, that was my question too, is if, you know, you don't want to restrict them, uh, and we want to get as much density as possible.
You'd end up with sixteen units, though.
Do I really care?
But is there, is it, is there a design to... Is there a design to this little... Is there a design to this little village type of thing that would allow for more units to be put in it?
Twelve units.
Because that's what we're looking at here, sort of a little village type of concept.
And I've got a question for John. How many bedrooms of affordable, how many four-bedroom units have you built as an affordable housing developer?
None.
None. See, in 25 years with Habitat, we've built one, because the demand is for two and three bedrooms.
And none of the affordables would be four-bedroom here. The affordables are three-bedroom.
Yeah, okay.
There's two three-bedroom, and you can check my math. There's two three-bedroom affordables. I think there's two three-bedroom market rates, and the remainder are all four-bedroom market rates.
Okay, I got the impression that there were, one of the ones, the affordables was four. Okay, stand corrected.
Are there elevations with that?
There's the one looking down the street I see you sent out. Yeah, that's probably the only one I saw.
So this is their shot of the floorprints. This is the existing structure at 40 Shore Street with the side porch on it, and the remainder go back here. So let us see, I think, 40 Shore Street architectural plans.
I saw some they've sent to us. I saw them on my computer as an attachment. Yeah.
So that is, these are the floorplans for the structure. So this is Building A. This is the structure on the street. That's the existing structure. And so this is what, essentially what Unit B is going to look like. So Building C, an affordable unit.
What's that like?
Building D, a market rate unit, three-bedroom. Building four, four-bedroom, market rate unit. Pardon me, Building E. Building F, market rate, four-bedroom. Building G, market rate, four-bedroom. Building H, market rate, three-bedroom. And then we have their landscape plan that they have proposed.
I like the one on the street best.
Got more character.
Tom, where's Unit C located at, please? Unit C is right here. So 40 Shore Street, you come in, you pass the second building behind 40 Shore Street. So Building C is just tucked right behind that.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to the site plan, because this is, there's not a whole lot of information on this landscape plan. Just a lot of crosshatching.
I've kind of stuck on the $870,000 myself.
They're limited to the property. The dividend is limited.
I must say, it's a, it's a great location.
I know, it's ideal.
Right off town. I've driven there, and it's in bad shape.
Yeah. I've been wondering what was going to happen, because it is a mess.
Yeah.
It's valuable piece of property.
And this is the perfect placement for it.
Yeah.
It's a good project. It's just overpriced.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind, we don't get to decide the prices of the market rate units.
Right. Well, there'll be people who want that, but it is one of the...
I see Mike's on there.
Yeah.
I didn't catch that. Flomix is the way I can't make this site plan show up.
Get the little X in there.
Let's try this one.
Well, while Tom is messing with that...
There we go. Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a vote to go past 11 o'clock tonight?
Oh, my God, please don't do that. I didn't drink my caffeinated tea today to keep me awake.
It's a joke.
So there shows a little better depiction of where Building C is at, John.
Make a motion.
Building C.
End it right now.
So, we're, tonight, we're just kind of giving the ZBA a heads-up that...
That we'll have comments, but they've heard some of our, Tom has heard some of our comments.
And then it's going to come back before us for site plan review?
No. This is a 40B.
This is it.
It's just a referral.
Just, okay.
It's just a referral. This is our one-shot.
Right. Well, not tonight, because...
Yeah, whatever, whatever we do is our one-shot.
Yeah, December 10th, we should be prepared.
Whatever we do, it's it.
Right. That's if we attend. But I think Tom volunteered to write up the comments about the not making it so obvious that one is the low-income place.
Yeah, that's not the point, though. The point is that they're opening the hearing on December 7th, so we can take a further look at it and have more thoughts, and then he'll write it up with all of the comments.
And that'd be fine with me, because as you know, we are meeting on December 10th and December 24th this month, the second and fourth, the second and fourth Tuesdays.
He's pulling your leg badly.
Just going to say, just going to say no one's going to be here, but...
The building's open.
Moving on.
So, leaving that comment behind, the next thing on the agenda is the Form-Based Code scope of work. And I don't know whether you all have looked at it or not. I did, and it looks fine.
I did, and I made some comments on it, and I wonder what happened.
They've been incorporated, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
Instead of a first site plan, that would be a, let's see here. So just to, for your verification, we received an email today from the accounting office. It says, "The funds have been approved from Town Meeting. You're free to spend them." So we were going to get on that posthaste. I checked with the Jennifer Mullin, the chief procurement officer, to make sure that we are, got our pins underneath of us, to make sure that we're going out to, I'm calling it out to bid, but it's not exactly out to bid, issued the RFQ, that we've got all of our ducks in a row procurement-wise. So in the scope that was prepared by the Cape Cod Commission, one of the deliverables was to a brief reporting, a brief report outlining recommendation approaches. That has been changed to concise at the recommendation of Ms. Harris, who is just fabulous at reading things and looking at stuff and fixing it. And then the other deliverable, rather than a first draft of the zoning recommendations, that would be a final draft. The first draft is essentially going to be what we put together through community resilience by design. So we want to make sure that we've got these folks on task, and that we're looking at putting these things together. So this is essentially the same scope that you've seen before, previously reviewed and vetted by the Cape Cod Commission. And I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of what's going on, and that we're going to be proceeding and moving forward with this. One of the questions that came up is, well, who decides who we get? And I think that is typically, in my experience, has been a small committee that includes staff and a member or two of the planning board. And I think that would probably be what we'd be considering here. But I'm happy to hear from the board.
What's the timeframe of this, Tom, if it's going out right now?
Well, I'm going to sit with Jennifer next week. So we'll be working through those sort of things, and I'll have more to report back after we hear from her.
So the chances are, it will go out, it'll be advertised, and go out sometime after the first of the year, is that...
My, my, my goal, well, if you send things out after our December 24th meeting, you're going to get crickets for a reply.
Right.
So if you don't get it out essentially in the second week of December, to get this in people's inboxes, so they've got time to work on it. And typically, when we send something out, it's, here's the proposal, replies due back by 30 days. And that's the question that I'll have with Jennifer about what's a logical time for that period. One of the things that's different about this than an RFP is that the process isn't quite as cumbersome. So we can be theoretically a bit more nimble in getting this out, but it gets back to the fact that everybody's just busy with stuff. And when you've got the holiday going on, we want to get it out as quick as possible. But we also don't want to go, you know, without my typical abundance of caution, to make sure that we've got things sort of set. So Jennifer and I'll meet next week. We'll talk about the parameters for that stuff, and get it out there into the community, so we've got some people to talk to, and some people to interview, and some proposals that are started.
Tom?
Are you going to add some selection criteria to the question proposals?
Yes. In fact, one of the emails from the Cape Cod Commission was about some of those parameters that I have in an email, but I don't know that they are on this particular proposal, largely about people's experience putting together a Form-Based Bylaw. You may remember that commercial back in the old days. I've never fixed a transmission before. We don't want folks biddling their first transmission on us. The folks who we talked about in-house are those firms that have got a track record of putting together Form-Based Code and engaging the populace. Because as I said before, it's not just about writing, zoning in a closed room. You've got to engage those stakeholders and get their interest.
References as well.
Correct.
I just have a recommendation. I've been studying this pretty hard, and I have found in July of this year, I think it was Littleton, actually had their Form-Based Code written and presented to the town, their very first. And it's the Littleton Planning Board. And if you've got the time, you can watch their whole hearing, and watch them go through, they're just six months or a year ahead of us. And you can see the same thing. And they're, it was just really interesting to see a town that's doing exactly just a little bit ahead of us. So if you get out there on the internet, it's on YouTube, and you can watch the planning board, and I think it's Littleton.
It is. They presented it at the SNEPA conference that...
And it's really, it's like, you watch them go through the whole thing. It's really quite an education.
They're a great little town. I mean, they...
But you can do it at home, just on your television set, YouTube.
Right. And how do you, what do you put in? Littleton Form-Based Code?
Littleton Planning Board, Form-Based Code, bang, it's there.
Let's do Littleton, Mass, because there are other Littletons in the country.
But it was quite educational for me.
Let's see if we can find that link, and we'll send it out to you.
Yeah.
Great.
Nice.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Transportation Management Committee. We have this in here, and I know Paul has some comments and questions, and Bob, I think you're interested as well.
Yeah.
I am, too.
Paul and I have had a discussion about it, and, you know, I kind of said that I would be willing to serve by default, because this has been something that I've been kind of pushing for. But I feel like I'm more of a one-agenda item on this. My big thing is the shuttles and using the school parking lot and all that. And then it came down to, well, I'm still in the middle of finishing up, building a house. I'm looking at surgery in January that's going to take me out of commission for about four months. So I probably, yeah. So I'm probably not the right person to take this on right now.
Are you having a little bottle of it?
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm going to have a bottle in front of me.
A bottle and a bottle.
So I would be happy to concede that position to anybody else on the board who would like to have it.
Okay. And I'd be interested. I went through this in that other town far, far away.
Paul, you had some questions?
Well, I'm looking at the request from the Town Manager's Office, and they're looking for application by 4:30 on Wednesday to 27th, which...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And they want seven members, four at large, one planning board, one bikeway, and one historical commission. Not sure why historical's on there, but one historical commission. When I asked about the mission statement, it was kind of, I'm going to use the old mission statement, and it was very confusing where it was, because they had some things that didn't make at all a lot of sense, frankly. Implementing a transportation element, local comprehensive plan, which is pretty obvious. Identifying problems and proposing solutions to transportation issues affecting the town, I think that's more than adequate. Coordinating action with various boards and departments in terms of transportation, I guess that's okay. Keeping the Board of Selectmen up to date in state and federal transportation policies, well, I believe that's a DPW issue, not a committee issue. And the last one was working with surrounding towns as well as Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket to implement transportation plans. Sounds like a state championship authority. So obviously, the first step, whoever's on that committee, is to come up with a revised mission statement. That makes some sense.
Paul, excuse me, are you interested in this? Because if you are, I would go for in a large position.
Initially, I was not, but I got requests from several people. Bob was interested, that's fine, because I've got enough to do with coastal resiliency.
I voted for Paul.
So I told Bob I would support him if he wanted to do it. Now he's backing out, so...
Well, Pam just voted for you, so you're it.
I just voted for Paul. Well, I served on that Route 28 thing.
Yeah.
And I think it'd be good to have an engineer on it.
Exactly what I was thinking.
It turns out you're a lot of engineering. Because I have a very small segmented area that I talked to somebody about that I wanted to be part of.
Okay, so Paul, you're it.
You're it, Paul. Happy Thanksgiving.
By acclamation.
Yes, by acclamation, for sure, sure.
Just as an aside, it was kind of interesting. Gerald Flanagan was the chairman of the Transportation Management Commission about 10 years ago. He used cadets to do a lot of work on that. And they come up with a report. And my understanding from Mark Palmer was, several months later, the board went to the Board of Selectmen, or that commission went to the Board of Selectmen, wanted to know implementation. And they acted like they didn't know anything about it. So they all resigned at one time. Now, Gerald Flanagan's widow gave me his basket box full of all his records from that meeting, but the report was not in there. I asked Town Manager's Office for the report, and they cannot...
It was televised. You could get it on FCTV. I watched it. They reported to the selectmen. It was televised. I watched it on television.
Well, nobody has the report.
But you could get it. I'm saying, you could go to FCTV and look for the selectmen.
10 years ago?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, the report was not available anywhere I went. So I think there's some work to be done on that.
Okay. Yes, I need to go home.
The main thing was, is he was wanting to change the traffic on Main Street.
Yeah.
Make it one-way. That didn't fly.
Yeah, that didn't fly. Subdivision regulations continue to our next meeting, December 10th. Committee reports, none, right? Good. Any announcements?
Oh.
No.
Covered everything already?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Whoa, whoa, wait a minute. We've got correspondence here. There was a plan submitted at ANR by William Fender for Lewis Neck Road. And as of November 19th, as Mr. Fender's representative, please accept this email as his request to withdraw the pending ANR application without prejudice. Do we accept it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then we've got something here from, oh, this is in regard to Mark Finneran's complaint to the AG about open meeting law with the...
Yeah.
Yeah, that, okay.
For housing form.
Right. And so this is just a notification that they've looked at it, and Mr. Finneran has 30 days to do something if he doesn't agree. So that's that, and future agenda items, absolutely, we're piled higher and deep. We don't need to add any more to that tonight, I think. Boy, am I plowing through this.
Except we want to check up on that John's proposal.
Yes. But that's already on, okay. And then next meeting is December 10th.
So the board hasn't officially said they'd prefer to meet on the 17th, rather than their duly-appointed meeting on the second, fourth Tuesday of the 24th? So...
Well, I prefer to meet on the 24th, and nobody shows up.
So should I assume the board is going to meet on the 17th? Because as we know, we have a lot of things to do.
Yeah. 17th, 10th, and the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the other option is the week after the 24th, which is January or December 31st.
Tom, you have such wonderful ideas.
No one says that.
I just did.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, we are adjourned.
All right, happy Thanksgiving.